Thank you for your patience. We have a couple of just announcements. Commissioner Peters will be here shortly. She's just running a little bit late. Commissioner Justice has got a meeting that he couldn't get out of, and he'll be joining us around 10 or 11 o'clock this morning, somewhere in that timeframe. And Commissioner Seal traveled this weekend to Louisiana, was it? Or where? Texas, Texas. Yeah, and picked up a cold, so she's just being a little careful. You know, you can't get a cold anymore and not panic about what it might or might not be. So she's just being extra careful. So thank you, Commissioner. She's feeling fine, but she's going to join us via Zoom this morning. So there'll be four of us to start and a couple that'll join us shortly. And with that, Mr. Administrator, Barry, it's all yours.
Do we need to? I was thinking it's a workshop. We don't, but...
I think that, you know, it's really up to the commission. You were right. You're not going to be taking any action today. I mean, arguably, you're going to be talking about some budget matters that will come before you for a vote later in time. So the board wanted to be abundantly cautious.
Commissioner Gerard, that's a good idea. Why don't we just go ahead and make a motion to allow Commissioner Seal to join us today? I got a motion from Commissioner Gerard, a second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay. You can join us. All right. Barry, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today kicks off six arduous days, three this week and three in June, where we're going to go into great detail regarding the budget and the budget request, and ultimately culminate July 13th in a budget recommendation to you. That balances the needs of the department, your strategic plan, which is really the foundation that sets our priorities, and ultimately what we can afford. So over the next six days, you're going to hear everything. So the departments will present to you and the constitutionals, and they'll present to you what they see as both wants and needs. We'll have to determine what the difference between a want and a need is, and bring that back to you as part of a budget recommendation. But you'll hear it all. There are several things that you've identified in your strategic plan that we're working very hard to see how we can incorporate within the budget. Some of those include addressing mental health issues in our community. You're going to hear today a presentation on what you've brought up to me for several years regarding the level of service within our parks, and several other areas that you'll hear as part of these budget presentations. So again, I'm happy that we're here. The departments and constitutionals have worked very, very hard to recognize the priorities that you've set and try to incorporate a reasonable level of budget request. And so, again, that will culminate ultimately. So as we go through, we're going to talk about the issues. We're not asking you to say yes or no to those requests, because ultimately I'll bring back the recommendation to you at the end, which will balance all of the competing needs and also the funding levels that we have available. But to start off the budget process, we also want to know where we're at from a property tax standpoint. And we have Mike Twitty, our property appraiser, here to kind of set the formation. They've been obviously working hard on bringing together all of the information available and what our levy maximums can be. Where's Mike?
I'm Mike.
Welcome, Mr. Twitty. Good to have you here this morning.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Barry. Yeah, just wanted to... They've asked me the last couple of years to come in, and this is a particularly unusual year, so it makes even more sense to address you all. You know, a year ago at this time, our crystal ball looked extremely cloudy when we were trying to figure out what values were going to look like. And, you know, as soon as the pandemic set in and we all vacated the county, I was getting calls from Commissioners and city managers and mayors about what the impacts were going to be. And we started analyzing it right away, and we were trying to be conservative at the same time, but there were so many unknowns that we couldn't even... There's so many moving parts, and it was changing every day. So we've been able to ride through it now. We've obviously watched the good fortune of our residential market in Pinellas County and, you know, really around the country. The pandemic created a big shakeup and a lot of movement, and a lot of that movement has been south and has benefited our county. That has helped to stave off the commercial impacts that we are seeing. So there are some COVID-impacted commercial properties and businesses, and we are addressing those in our analysis. But we are cautiously optimistic that we would still be on the positive side, and it's actually better than we initially thought. So we think the values are going to be, from the general fund perspective, countywide, in the 5.5% or better range. So that is a good number, and we're still doing some refinement. We... To give you, especially our newer Commissioners that may not know all the timeline of our value certifications from our perspective, as of June 1, we deliver value estimates to all the taxing authorities. And again, those are estimates. Those don't go to Department of Revenue at that point. A month later, as of July 1, we'll actually... I'll certify the role. That will go to the Department of Revenue and also the taxing authorities again. And that will be the tax role that you all will work from for a budget perspective, or from a budget perspective. So that role is called the preliminary tax role. And then later, we'll do the interim tax role that will also be certified, and that will be after trim time and before the tax collector sends out bills. And then, obviously, final role certification won't even happen until next year, and that will be after Value Adjustment Board. So first, I want to give a quick shout out to my team at the property appraisers office. Many people don't realize what we actually do there. It's a pretty sizable organization with a lot of moving parts. We've got, you know, great brains there and a lot of hard workers. And so, everything from customer service to mapping to handling and administering exemptions, and then, obviously, a lot of appraisal work. So we're not only appraising about 436,000 parcels of real estate as of January 1 each year, but we're also handling all the business equipment. So that's about 60,000 accounts. About 15,000 of those are taxable. Those are the ones that exceed the $25,000 exemption. Let's see. Oh, I wanted to give you a little update on new construction. So the last three years, we've flirted with about $1 billion of new construction countywide. The bulk of that... Well, I shouldn't say that the jurisdiction with the most is always the city of St. Pete. I think last year, they're around $400 million. This year, they're going to be likely around $300 million. So the numbers for new construction this year are closer to... Where did I put it? Closer to $800 million overall countywide. And that is broken down. About 51% is residential. 27% is multifamily rental apartment. 22% is commercial. So, and that's been very consistent the last several years, that balance between those new construction elements. And to give you a little historical perspective, because a lot of times I've presented a chart that shows the last peak in the trough we went through. And just to give you some perspective on those numbers. So our taxable values increased 60% over the past nine years since it bottomed out in 2012. So that's an average of about 6.5% to 7% a year. And our values are up over 20% since the last peak in 2007. A lot of people are always curious about where we are from that last peak. So we're up 20% from there. So, and that was 14 years ago now. It's hard to believe it was that far back. So, but that is really only a movement of about 1.5% a year from that last peak. However, we arrived at that last peak in kind of a false way. We overheated the market, and it spiked up in a way that it shouldn't have. So we've come to a spot in our market more naturally. Obviously, this year, we have had some heating up with all the out-of-state buyers coming in. Our data is telling us that about a third of all the buyers coming into our market area are from out of state. The surveys I've had of brokers have actually... They... Word of mouth is they say 50%, but when we actually look at the numbers, it looks like it's about a third.
A third of the buyers are from out of state?
Mr. Twitty?
Yes?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have data on how much of those buyers... How many of those buyers are international?
We do. It's not a giant percentage. I don't... I would have to look into it a little deeper to give you some actual numbers. We did that study a few years back, but...
I was just curious.
Well, this year, it's probably lower than typical because they weren't even able to come here this past year. We've had a lot of international owners actually requesting reductions because they couldn't get to their condo. So where we stand right now, we're loading up our final residential models this week, and then we'll be doing some QC up until we deliver estimates, and then we'll continue our QC process through the... Up until July 1, when we deliver our encertifier values to DOR. Yes, Commissioner?
So you don't feel like anything that's going on right now is sort of a bubble that resembles what we had last time?
Not like last time. We've got real buyers that are occupying the properties. Granted, a lot of them are still second homeowners and things like that. But with the whole work from home and people realizing that and that they can live almost any... A lot of... Especially a lot of white-collar pre-positioning for retirement, they're making those movements a little bit early or buying that property and realizing, you know what? We can own it a few years early. I can still get my income stream and work from home, even if I have to commute back a couple of times a month. So that has added a lot to the activity that we have. And our supply is at the lowest I've seen in my over 30 years of real estate. It's, you know, a single family is at around half a month's supply. And you're not going to tip, flip the script into a buyer's market till you hit about at least six months of inventory. So we've got a ways to go.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
That's pretty much all I had. I'll see you guys back in June.
So the way... So we look at the preliminary numbers. Mike really helps to, you know, solidify that as we begin our budget. But that June 1 date is then, you know, becomes, you know... When he gets his preliminary numbers in, we'll use that to work on our budget during the month of July while you hear from the constitutionals and all their needs. It's really that July 1 date that begins to... Now we have to refine it and put together a budget for the 13th. So there's some quick turnaround times once we have those values and looking at all the needs. So that's the reason we do all the budget meetings and everything ahead of time so we know all the needs. We can analyze that. We can have a preliminary idea of what we think we should do and not do. But within, you know, a one-month period, it really all comes together. And he's been working very hard and closely with OMB and our staff to give us those projections as he continues to refine those, and we very, very much appreciate it. And I know I hear from cities all over the county where he does the same thing for them, and I know they very, very much appreciate your effort.
I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
All right. Keep up the great work. Thank you all. You too. Take care.
With that, I know Cecilia will have a few comments, and then I'll... But I'll just turn it over to her, and she can make any opening comments regarding the budget, and then we'll jump right in.
Good morning. I'm Cecilia McCorkle. I'm the countywide budget division director for the operating budget. Just to let you know how we got to this point, just give you a quick, very brief overview of what we've done up until now. We kicked off the budget process back in January, the first week of January, right out of the holidays. Making this year a little more challenging for some of our customers was our new budget software was implemented, and we used that for budget development this year. What we tried to do to make it a little bit easier was stagger the opening of each module so that there was training right before that to try to help make it a little bit easier. We closed the budget software in mid-March, so they had about two months in the budget software to develop their budgets. We, a few weeks later, started our budget meetings with the departments and the county administrator to review all the requests that had been input into the budget. What I wanted to remind you all is that, again, this year, we did not provide targets to the BCC departments or independent agencies as we had in prior years, other than last year. The constitutional officers, however, did continue to receive a target, and we do try to work closely with them to make sure we're incorporating any needs that they have that should be incorporated in their targets.
Would you explain what a target is so everybody has the same context?
Absolutely. So when we're going through our forecast process, and you all should be familiar with that, we presented that to you in February. We develop a set of assumptions that are based on usually CPI or personal services will be based on what we see in growth of claims, any benefits, what we project for FRS increases. We take those, and in prior years, we actually applied that to the adopted budget and to create a target for each of the departments. So we would apply a percentage to personal services and a percentage to the remaining budget to go ahead and increase that budget as a baseline budget to start with. Beginning last year, we ceased doing that, although we do develop those assumptions, and we use them for comparison purposes. We don't automatically inflate the budget to do that. So that's the difference we've had in the past couple of years. It's helped keep our expenditures down.
So I just wanted... I wanted for the Commissioners to understand now, when you see a constitutional presentation, we've assumed a certain inflationary increase within their budget. All the rest, we do not assume any increase, so they have to, in essence, justify anything. So I just wanted you to understand the context as we go forward in these.
So over the course of April and May, we have met with the county administrator in each department and agency to go through their budget requests, answer questions, provide analyses to the county administrator, and have tried to incorporate some of those changes into what you're seeing today, although there are still going to be some that you may hear about as we go through the budgets that we're anticipating to make after this for the proposed budget. Like Barry said, we will have additional budget information sessions in June. That's when we'll also bring the general fund toward... To you, and you will see the June 1 taxable values incorporated into that, so it'll give you a little clearer picture of what we're looking at. And I believe that's the June 16 date. And we'll incorporate any changes that you have, you know, from feedback here and that the county administrator has, and we'll be bringing all those recommendations back in July and the proposed budget as the county administrator set.
So first up, we have Parks and Conservation Resources with Paul Kazi being the director. And I'm not sure the order that we're going to go here. So is it Shane is... Or...
Good morning. I actually will be facilitating this meeting.
Okay, so we're going to start off with... I didn't know we were starting off with budget or the consultant presentation.
Actually, we're going to start off with the budget first, and then I'm going to hand it off to Jonathan.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Charlie Jenkins. I am the budget analyst for Parks and Conservation Resources. Joining me this morning is Shane Kunsa, who is the Strategic and Performance Management Analyst for Parks and Conservation Resources. We have Paul Kazi, the director of Parks and Conservation Resources, and we also have Jonathan Ingram of Novak Consulting. I will be facilitating this meeting with additional support from Shane and Paul, and we'll cover the department's budget and performance highlights before handing it off to Jonathan to discuss the department's level of service study. Parks and Conservation Resources is responsible for maintaining county parks, preserves, and other county land, monitoring beach and water safety, providing visitor services to citizens, and providing horticulture and sustainability education to the public, all of which enhance the quality of life for our community and its future generations. Departmental staffing is remaining fairly flat, and no additional positions have been added for FY '22. Let's see. Yeah, Parks and Conservation Resources consists of two funds, the General Fund and the Tree Bank Fund, and seven budget programs, which is administration, beach and water safety, education and outreach, land management, trades, visitors, and volunteer services. The General Fund is the primary funding source for the department, and the Tree Bank Fund addresses land maintenance issues such as the removal of exotic invasive plants. General Fund revenues increased by $61,490 or 0.87% for FY '22 due to Sankey Park referentials and recycling, beach access parking fee revenues at Fort DeSoto Park, revenues for parking fine violations issued by parking enforcement, and an annual grant reimbursement for the Florida Yards and Neighborhoods program that is issued by Tampa Bay Water. These increases were offset by the removal of revenue at Fort DeSoto Park due to the contract expiring with Tampa Bay Pilots for FY '22, and a change in user fees due to the removal of trailer boat storage at Sutherland Bayou Marina. Revenues were actually revised upward and were based on current actuals as of April 2021. And fully budgeted FY '22 revenues are $7,514,110.
And what you'll also see in your budget is some of... Remember... And what you'll also see in, in your budget is some, remember last year, we were revising numbers down, so sometimes this one isn't that much, but some of the revenues you'll see a significant increase. It actually probably puts you back to historical levels or close to that, so, because last year, it's, it's a comparison to last year, and last year we had as a, as a, as a down number, just, you know, for context.
Awesome. Thank you, Barry.
Are you, are you going off of a presentation here?
I'm sorry, I'm following along with the, the narrative. I just have talking points to go along with it.
Okay, so we, I'm, I'm seeing a presentation, but I'm assuming that's coming from, that's, I'm, all that you're talking right now, I'm seeing nothing, so I'm just listening.
Okay, so we, we have to set the context of what we're, we're briefing from. The presentation is going to be from Jonathan Ingram, and, and he's a consultant that looked at the level of service study. Within your, within the attachment should be a budget summary. Okay? And that is a Parks and Conservation Department budget analysis.
Okay. I just want to make sure I.
Yeah, so let's, if we can, if we can find that document, that would be the one that he's briefing from.
That's fine. Just want to make sure I was, it's all here.
Yes.
It's all here, I just didn't.
We got a lot of attachments, sorry. So.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
You're totally fine. I'm on page two of the narrative.
Bill had a, Bill had a comment.
Good morning, commissioners. Just want to also just set the context as far as what the intent of the way, the style that we're doing today is, and for the next six days.
Yes.
Is that this is intended to be a conversation. So for that reason, other than a consultant coming in and doing a formal presentation, when you're working with the staff and we're presenting the budget and what the request is, we're intending that we're actually talking as a group about what it is, what it looks like, and for that reason, we don't have a formal presentation where we're standing at the podium and talking at you. The intent is that we're walking through the material that we've shared with you and allowing for dialogue about that material.
Okay. And, and so, and I, I got confused because we have a presentation from a consultant on this one, but the idea is for the, the budget analyst to walk through the numbers and what they've analyzed and what they're looking at, because they're ultimately making the recommendation, you know, regarding level, the level of funding. And then we'll turn it over to, we'll go through performance information and then to the department. Then, because typically we start, when we get with the department director, we start talking about, you know, flower beds and this and that, and all kinds of other things other than budget numbers. So we want to hit the budget, then we can open it up, have a conversation with them, update them on the needs and, you know, some of the questions that you may have. In this particular case, we'd also have a presentation for the level of service study.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thanks. All right. So the tree bake fund revenues increased by $4,000, well, $4,510 to be exact, or 8.63% due to civil penalties levied for the county's tree ordinance, and that's when trees are removed without being replaced when land is purchased for alternative uses. Right? As for expenditures, the general fund operating budget decreased by $200,000, $206,470 or 0.91% for FY '22, and it's primarily driven by a reduction in personal services due to the reallocation of staff hours to the city works implementation and capital projects in the budget programs for land management and PCR administration. The visitor service program supports the safe maintenance for Pinellas County parks and preserves and manage, sorry, and management areas for visitors. The operating expenditures decreased by $71,800 or 0.89%, and that's driven by a reduction of workers' compensation claims primarily at Fort De Soto Park and a reduction in operating supplies. Let's see. And also for, for this year, Parks and Conservation Resources completed the Novak level of service study in early May 2021, and that will aid the department in setting levels of service expectations and developing meaningful performance measures. The cost of the Novak study was $78,000, and you will hear more from this study from Jonathan after, after this presentation. PCR is currently expected to complete the unincorporated youth recreation master plan in October 2021, and this will include a conceptual plan for the integration of seminal youth sports programs into a single representative organization. Costs associated with this master plan are $168,000, and that will be paid out of the Deepwater Horizon Fund Study, which allocated $286,000 for the incorporated seminal master plan. The completed master plan and an update on current and future sports recreation are expected to be presented to the BCC in early 2022. Capital outlay reflects a decrease of $46,000 or $46,900 or 8.93%, and that's driven primarily by the reduction in nonrecurring equipment costs. The volunteer services program supports the management of PCR volunteers. This program decreased by $57,000 or 30.26% for FY '22, and that's due to a decrease in salary and benefits due to the realignment of one FTE to a different budget program. And that was partially offset by an increase in costs for modifications to the Keep Pinellas Beautiful contract. PCR volunteers, volunteer hours did decrease by 49.3% in FY '20 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, this decrease in volunteer hours has allowed the department to streamline the program to focus on specific areas such as campground hosts, Heritage Village docents, auxiliary, auxiliary rangers, and master gardeners. The education and outreach program supports education and research in the areas of natural resources and urban sustainability through access to programs, partnerships, and educational facilities. This program decreased by $83,480 or 4.3% due to, well, 4.03%, due to a decrease in salary and benefits due to the realignment of one FTE to a different budget program, and this was partially offset by an increase in costs for the 4H youth community garden, well, development and maintenance of that garden, University of Florida faculty contracts, risk management, and fleet and operations and maintenance. The land management program supports the protection of Pinellas County parks, environmental lands, and natural resources. It also supports the maintenance of landscaping for countywide properties. And this program increased by $412,630 or 10.28% due to an inflationary increase in salary and benefits, the addition of a new mid-year horticultural operations contract, and the addition of a storage shed for equipment storage at Brooklyn Creek. Excluding reserves, the tree bake fund operating budget decreased by $1,530 or 1.59%, and that's due to a slight reduction in medical benefits. Operating expenses remain consistent with FY '21 based on an existing contract for exotic plant removal. And just for the COVID-19 impacts, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been a permanent shift in operations within Parks and Conservation Resources, who has ceased the sale of annual passes via concessionaires at Tarpon Springs and Fort De Soto Park. This process has been centralized within PCR administration, and annual passes are now being sold via reservation system. The departmental cost savings for this shift are staff labor hours and volunteer hours. As for decision packages, Parks and Conservation Resources are proposing the following. There's a decision package for parking meters. That's basically for continuing with services, we are requesting to upgrade parking meters to a 4G network before the discontinuation of the current 3G network, which, which is projected to end in the first quarter of 2022. This decision package also aligns with the county, the county's cashes initiative, and the anticipated net impact is $140,000, and that's nonrecurring. The second decision package is for cellular service procurement, and we are basically requesting procurement of cellular service for 50 iPads in preparation for city works, which is going live in FY '22. The anticipated net impact is $21,640, and that is recurring. The third decision package is for license plate recognition enforcement, and that's basically for implementation of an enforcement software solution to collect fees more efficiently. There's an estimated net impact of $250,000 for software installation for FY '22, which is nonrecurring, and an estimated $25,000 in annual recurring costs, annual recurring operating cars start, operating costs, starting in FY '23. Right? And last but not least is, following the Novak presentation, there could be additional decision packages for FTE and equipment, but we'll, we would determine that once the, we hear the presentation and move forward with that. So just wanted to put that on you guys' radar. There are no potential threats as of May 2021 for the department, so there's no worries there. And at this moment, I would like to hand it off to Paul, the director of Parks and Conservation Resources, to discuss any additional priorities or highlights.
Just a quick question, if I could. I was looking at your department revenues, department expenditures, there's a delta of about 15 million. What's, in, in the general revenue side, where is the parking revenue for our three parks located, and how much is that anticipated to be?
The parking fees are more the charges for services. Let me just, yeah, that's for charges for services for the general fund revenues.
It's under there, or?
Well, it's, it's included in the charges for services.
How much is that, how much is that estimated to be on the parking side?
Well, we have boat ramp parking, and we also have beach access parking for the boat ramp parking.
Now, I'm really interested in the beach access to Fort De Soto, the three beaches that we have.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I know historically, the three, the three-year and four-year trends are about $208,000 each, but I know for this year, let's see, it's actually, we actually revised the revenues upward for this year based off of the month's seven actuals, so we're projecting $211,000 for FY '22? Sorry, FY '21, we're ending. And we revised it, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. It's $211,000 for the FY '21 estimate, and we revised the FY '22 estimate upward to $220,000.
And that, John, or Charlie, just, that's for, how, how many parks? What's that 211,000 made up of? Either Paul or Charlie.
Commissioner, our, our three beach parks bring in approximately $2 million in revenues a year.
And that's why I was a little confused with 200,000. I want to make sure. We have three parks, we collect parking revenue, and I just want to make sure that I, I'm hearing it's 2 million, right?
Correct.
Apologies. And also, page two of attachment two, we'll have that breakdown for you.
Page two, okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other question? Yes, Commissioner Flowers?
Just a question. We, there's a request to upgrade to a 4G network system. Why would we not upgrade to a 5G network system when other carriers are moving in that direction? I know not all places have been, but if we're going to be moving in that direction, why would we not just make that investment?
Thank you. I actually reached out to see if that was feasible, and I, we don't think it's feasible at this time to upgrade to the 5G network, so we feel that 4G is more aligned, more along the lines of what we are budgeted for, but we did reach out to kind of determine what that is, so we can look into that more to see.
When we say feasible, are we saying network access? Are we saying financially? Are we saying that the network is not broad enough at this point? Are we saying that the systems that we're using, whether it's AT&amp;T or whoever, what do we, what are we saying when we say not feasible?
We're going from 3G to 4G. Of course, the 3G network, we're, we're told will no longer be.
Yeah, it's, it's slow.
Right. February of 2022.
It's a wrap.
It's gone. So the manufacturers of our machine, they're only, they're only going to be suitable to go to a 4G network, which, which is what they allow for, and, and rather than go through the expense of replacing machines, which cost anywhere from $11,000 to $13,000 apiece, going to the 4G network will actually extend the life of the equipment through what we expect to be, you know, a gradual elimination of those machines altogether and going to the LPR or the license plate recognition type tool.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner, if you look on page two of the budget detail, it shows the breakdown. So, and for 2022, Fort De Soto entry fees, $1.2 million, and San Key's $473,000, and so if, it's back in some of that total detail.
I'm, I'm not following which one of these attachment, there's so many of them.
Yeah, I know. It's, there's a, there's a budget detail, it's attachment two, but you can, I mean.
But there's, there's budget reports, and I don't see where it says budget detail. Which one?
Right here.
I just looked at that.
Page two.
Okay.
Right here, this is what, what they're talking about, right here.
Okay.
I'm still old school, printed out, that's why.
I know, usually I do.
I can find it, I can find it easier that way.
I didn't, I didn't.
I've tried to be paperless and.
Me too, and I didn't get to the courthouse last week, so I couldn't get this printed.
I can't. That's the reason I haven't printed it out.
I know, it's very difficult.
So, so that, I wasn't going to get into that detail, but now that we've gotten there.
Yeah.
I, I do see the Fort De Soto, and I do see the San Key. I know one's got to be the Tarpon Springs location, and I'm not sure which one that is. And then there's another one, I'm assuming that's out on.
And I can have, ask Paul to kind of break those down, because there, it's probably just a subtitle under there that we're not seeing with this level of budget detail, but we can, we can provide that information to you, to where you can see what makes up the 2 million.
Yeah, just where they, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. So we can do a follow-up on that, Charlie. Okay?
So, may I ask a question? So Paul, I'll speak to you more during the break rather than tie us all up right now, but did I hear you say that the county is not upgrading to 5G as Commissioner Flowers spoke about because of the cost of the equipment?
No, for the equipment we use, 4G is what's available to us. There is not a 5G option available to us. So we, we use machines, CalA machines that were purchased roughly 10 years ago, so with their upgrade, it's 4G, not 5G, which will do everything our equipment needs to be able to do to transmit data and, and do the point of sale and those types of things.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Interesting where you're going to. Is there another idea of a way of accomplishing that? So that's, and, and they're gonna, they're, they're actually going to be having a vendor thing, so vendors can present, and if there's, you know, if there's a, a better, you know, mousetrap, then, you know, they can, they can pitch those ideas.
And I love that idea, by the way. Thank you for doing that.
So Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, commissioners. So this time last year, Parks and Conservation Resources department staff was primarily assigned to COVID-related activities. You know, first of all, probably foremost, our staff was spending most of their time sanitizing restrooms, drinking fountains, benches, and playgrounds. We were also staffing PPE collection sites. We were assisting law enforcement with increased social distancing on our beaches when they were open, as well as assisting at COVID testing sites and then later vaccination sites. Meanwhile, our educators at Extension in Heritage Village, though their buildings were closed to the public, they were getting creative and putting together virtual tours of facilities, as well as doing YouTube videos, especially for those students who were left home last year, to still be able to promote, you know, what we do in Parks and Conservation Resources. Now, at the same time, of course, a whole new group of people discovered Pinellas County parks. We saw our visitation increase by double-digit percentages. People certainly were looking for a place to get out and exercise, while many of the indoor venues, gymnasiums, bowling alleys, malls were closed. So today, as we begin to put the pandemic restrictions in the rearview mirror, we're really looking forward to getting back to what we do, and that is serving the public, protecting our natural resources, providing education, and providing assistance to, to both visitors and residents of Pinellas County. So as we go into into fall, one of the big things we're looking forward to is the implementation of City Works. You know, this will be a huge opportunity for us to do much more data analysis, be able to reflect our performance measurements to actual work completed. We're also encouraged by the recent Level of Services study that was completed by NOVAC, you know, that talks about what we need to do to sustain a top-tier Parks and Recreation or Parks and Environmental Lands program for Pinellas County residents and visitors and do the things that make Pinellas County someplace people want to live and want to visit. So with that segue, I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan Ingram with the NOVAC Group, now a part of Rafftelis, who will present an overview of the Level of Services study that we just recently completed.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, we got you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Barry. And very happy to be with you all today to talk about the service level and staffing study that we engaged in for the county. My name is Jonathan Ingram. I'm a Senior Manager with Rafftelis, the NOVAC Consulting Group. I'll get into that a little later. But, you know, my primary role with the firm is operations and staffing studies across really multiple operating areas within city and county governments. So I was the project manager for this particular engagement. We had a team of several folks who who completed the work with us, who couldn't be here today, but be happy to walk you through some of the key findings associated with that process. So I've done this a thousand times, and there's always.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. So just a quick overview of what we want to cover today. Again, I'll just touch touch on who we are as a firm, the kind of work we do across the country. And I'll get into the work we've we completed for for Pinellas County Parks and Conservation Resources, give you an overview of the project, sort of why we were brought in, and the questions that we were asked to answer. And then we'll go over some of the key findings and recommendations associated with the study. You all have hopefully received a copy of the project report at this point, and I'll hit the high points of that. I won't go into every single detail, but I'll hit on those items that are sort of most significant from a policy and budgetary consideration perspective, and certainly provide opportunities for conversation as the presentation goes on. And then we'll talk briefly about next steps, and then certainly engage in any questions you may have as we go forward. So just a little bit about Rafftelis. So Rafftelis and the NOVAC Consulting Group, we are the largest local government consulting firm in the United States. So we have worked for over 1,200 public agencies and utilities, served about 25% of the US population. And our focus is really in a few different areas. Rafftelis, okay, historically has really focused on the utility side of the house. So water, sewer, stormwater, real emphasis on rate analysis and rate studies. The NOVAC Consulting Group, we merged with Rafftelis in 2020, in January of 2020. And the NOVAC Consulting Group, I've been with with the NOVAC Consulting Group for about 15 years at this point. We have our focus is primarily operations and financial studies for general purpose, local government, cities, and counties throughout the United States. So we've really sort of merged two perspectives, I think, in the in the in the process. When we began this engagement, you know, it was sort of in tandem with the merger with the firm, but it's been a very good relationship, good merger going forward, and really has added some capacity, I think, in terms of financial analysis. So just a little context, and you're going to hear NOVAC, and you're going to hear Rafftelis. I just wanted to clear up kind of that merger question. So as I mentioned, we have a number of different focus areas. I work for the management consulting practice, and we really do three three primary things. We help communities, counties, cities with strategic planning. We help them answer the questions, who we are now and who we want to be. We help with executive recruitment. So we, you know, manage executive recruitment processes for city and county governments, high-level positions. And then the meat and potatoes of our work is really organizational assessment, and that's the area of the practice that I work in. Okay? And assessments are really process improvement studies, staffing studies, service level studies, financial modeling, those kinds of things. So just just some quick context about who we are. So in terms of the project overview, I think it's, you know, kind of first important just to touch base and talk a little bit about the context of the environment that the department is dealing with. So right now, you know, PCRD maintains about 49 properties across the county, about 20,000-plus acres. Each of those parks, you know, have different characteristics. There are, you know, several miles of trails, picnic shelters, restrooms, beach access areas, boardwalks. You all know, as residents of the county, the diversity of resources that each of these parks, you know, contain. And one of the things that I think is common in a lot of municipalities and a lot of counties, and that is certainly evident in the survey that you all complete, the community survey that you all complete on a recurring basis, is that the quality of park infrastructure is very closely linked to community perceptions about quality of life. And that's a that's a consistent trend in your community surveys. And and really, that that perspective is something that we want to we want to maintain and protect and and is part of the part of the focus of this study. You know, as Paul mentioned, there's been a pretty significant increase in attendance over the past three years. A lot of that has occurred, you know, from kind of during the pandemic period. But even before the pandemic, we were seeing 6%, 7% increases in in park attendance and utilization each year. So very highly utilized and highly prized resources in the community. Now, within the context of the infrastructure that the Parks and Conservation Department is required to maintain, there have also there's also been some pretty significant staffing reductions, right? You know, everyone remembers the grim days of the Great Recession, right? It was it impacted Florida particularly hard. You all, as a county, your predecessors on the on the Board of County Commissioners had to make some difficult decisions in terms of reducing resources. And ultimately, from 2007 to the present day, there's about 163 FTE, or about a 47% reduction in Parks and Conservation Resource staffing. Okay? That's a significant, you know, chunk of staff. Now, there have been some additions and transfers of different functions. Some things have been have been offloaded to other departments or transferred to other departments. Urban Forestry, for example, is now the responsibility of Public Works. But over the same period of time, Parks and Conservation Resources has also taken on other responsibilities. So there's been some back and forth over that time. So but the but the total reduction is still pretty significant. Okay? Over the same period, okay, there have also been some significant increases in the amount of infrastructure that the department is required to maintain. About 16,000 acres in environmental lands have been added to their book of work, some of which is state-owned, some of which is county-owned, but ultimately, it's the responsibility of PCRD staff to maintain. Now, you know, one of the things that we plotted as part of this process is how has the department responded to these challenges, right? And they've done a lot of really, I think, creative things to really reallocate and reorganize how they go about, you know, meeting their workload. And I would say the structure of the general organization of the department is pretty well-suited and pretty pretty efficient, pretty lean. Okay? So now, all this said, that historical context is really important, right? But that alone is not a justification to add personnel within within the department. What's important to look at is workload volume and service level. Ultimately, those are the two primary drivers of staffing need in any department. So with that in mind, the Parks and Conservation Department asked us to come in and really create a service, develop a service level and staffing assessment that that answers a few very specific questions and very specific goals. We wanted to define what is the gap between service level targets? So, you know, what do you expect to see in your parks in each of the key areas? Could be restroom maintenance, mowing, you know, landscape maintenance, trail maintenance, those kinds of things? What's the gap between those expectations and the current staffing resources that are available? We wanted to compare your current service standards. So, you know, what do you expect to accomplish, or what do you hope to accomplish? How does that compare to best practices? You know, how do other communities who have outstanding park systems, you know, allocate their resources? What are their particular service goals? And we also wanted to look at process and procedure where it was appropriate. Are there ways to increase staff capacity without necessarily adding personnel? So that's a fundamental part of our work as well. And then ultimately, clearly define for you all where are you at today? Where do you want to be? And what are the staffing levels required to get there? Okay? So our process is fairly extensive. You know, there's both qualitative and quantitative work. The major bulk of the work is really to document what are your current workload demands. And we, you know, we spent quite a bit of time onsite and analyzing data to ultimately develop a labor hour model that says how many labor hours, what's the what's the aggregate number of hours that you need to actually meet your service level expectations, and compare that to where you're at, to what you're currently funding and what you're currently organized to perform. We look at best practices in that space. We look at leave usage. That's really important, and I'll touch on that later, because the amount of, you know, you expect employees to take leave, right? That's that's part of the part of the benefit of our it's really an expectation in terms of employee health and well-being, right? But that has an impact on operations as well, and that has to be considered as you develop a staffing model. So we have gone through this process and completed that service level comparison, and ultimately completed the labor hour model. So what did it look like? You know, one of the one of the things that's that's really important to us and really important to a good outcome in this process is to engage with employees really at every level of the organization. So our project team spent about a week onsite, you know, knocking out nine or 10-hour days, interviewing park maintenance personnel, really at every level of the organization, managers, analyzing significant volumes of data in terms of workload data, work order data, budget and financial information as well, to ultimately inform that staffing model and come up with what we believe are a series of recommendations that will help guide some of your decision-making going forward. So without further ado, key findings and recommendations. What did we learn as part of this process, and what are the key key outcomes? So just a few general observations. One of the things I think that we were struck with is that despite the staffing reductions that you all have experienced, despite the changes, you know, that that the department has had to engage in to continue to meet service levels to the best degree possible, there really is a high level of commitment among staff to quality service delivery. You know, one of the one of the common things that we heard from staff is, you know, part of what we're struggling with is we are we remember doing it much better, right? So there's a there's a common commitment, I think, that that is important to capitalize on. Very, you know, maintenance staff work really well together, I would say, in their in their group. So pretty pretty solid sort of working relationships, both within units and between program areas. So there's very much a team atmosphere. And, you know, and I say this because these are really, these are, these are really important qualities that you all can continue to build upon and take advantage of as you continue to refine service levels and and structure within the department. But there are staffing challenges, right? There are a number of staffing issues which will which we will go over. You know, so one of the things that's that's important to note is that the department has standard operating procedures. So these are essentially the department's service level goals. At each park, in each maintenance area, so mowing, park rangers, environmental lands management, there are clear SOPs that define what the expectations are. One of the things that we found is that the existing SOPs align very well with best practices. So when we compared to other organizations, when we compared to institutional best practices through the National Wreck and Park Association, National Park Service, University of Florida, those kinds of those kinds of agencies, there's really a lot of parity there. But the staffing levels within parks are broadly insufficient to meet those existing standard operating procedures. What that means is that many SOPs, things like trail maintenance, deep cleaning of restrooms, deep cleaning of parks, some of your mowing standards, and your off-season, your non-peak season special project maintenance standards, aren't completed on a recurring basis. They're completed as special projects as time allows. And that has an impact on the quality and experience of the park infrastructure. Okay? The other, you know, important piece is the capacity for customer service and enforcement is constrained. This is especially evident evident at the park ranger level. So park rangers are are that group of staff who are responsible for general maintenance at your regional parks and one preserve, but mostly at your regional parks and on your on Pinellas Trail. And there's really limited capacity to engage in proactive customer service and enforcement. The other issue that has a really important impact on your operation is leave utilization. Right now, across each of the four maintenance groups, and I'll touch base, I'll give you a quick summary of those maintenance groups in a moment, leave usage alone absorbs about 13 full-time equivalent positions a year. So that means that if the staffing level is, you know, one, you have your budgeted staffing, but in reality, you're going without that capacity on an annual basis. And that needs to be accounted for, you know, as you build a staffing model. So, you know, broadly speaking, what are those areas where, you know, the department is meeting best practices? And what are those areas, those significant areas, where additional effort or additional time is needed, additional labor hours are needed to get to best practice levels? So, you know, the daily recurring tasks to keep, you know, boat ramps, parks and playgrounds safe and clean, trimming, shelter cleaning, trash service, those kinds of things, the department does a great job in making sure that those those things occur on a recurring basis. It's really the more significant work, the blowing or sanding, you know, leaves, edging trails and paths, those trail maintenance responsibilities are significant. Mowing, the department is really unable to really effectively meet best practice mowing standards, which is a highly visible feature, right? That's the thing that folks notice most when they move into a park, right? Deep cleaning of restrooms, shelters, those kinds of things, shower tower cleaning, spraying for invasive species, so really managing invasive species, which is a challenge that I'll touch on, and and moving toward native planning. So some of the land management plan type goals are not really occurring on a on a are occurring on a on a regular basis. They're completed as time allows, really during the colder weather months. So when we when we do all the analysis, we develop a labor hour, so the labor hour model, you know, what does it mean at the aggregate? You know, right now, there are about 208,000 hours of maintenance capacity, sort of budgeted and available at the park. As we completed the analysis, you need about 22-plus thousand hours a year to be able to achieve those best practice goals. And more significantly, you need about 26,000, 27,000 hours a year to be able to cover to properly cover for leave and make sure that your parks are staffed on a consistent basis going forward. So that's the that's kind of the high-level, big picture in terms of what the labor hour gap is. Now, the next sort of important question is how does that actually apply sort of at the line level, at the program level? Okay? So it's great to know the total number of hours, but how do you actually distribute those hours among each of the groups? The first.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So current staffing at 208,000, I guess, is hours. The bottom one is just adding, I see you added both the meeting best practices and the leave, right?
Correct.
Okay. So so that leave, that green, that lighter green piece.
That's the leave.
Is the leave piece that would be on top of our current staffing?
That's correct.
Okay. Not the additional staffing?
No, the question is, is it 40, is it 48,000? Or is it for the combination of the two?
It's a comment. So 22,000 hours for best practice and additional 26,000 hours for leave. So it's the it's the two numbers combined.
Okay. But the additional PTO time or the additional leave time is for the the increased capacity based on best practices? You're not basing it on the current staffing?
That's correct.
On the you're basing it on what that best practices staffing would be?
So we are we are basing it on what your targeted staffing level should be at each park, right? So your best practices.
Should.
And then how do you cover leave?
Okay.
Correct.
And you also made a comment that our SOP is the same as best practices.
In most areas, it's very closely aligned. So, you know, what that means is, you know, is that the department has has done everything that it can to maintain lofty service level goals, despite the fact that you've experienced those service reduction or those staffing reductions, right? They've done a lot of things to to provide capacity in that space, but that's correct. Yes.
Yeah. Just one second. One other question real quick. Meeting these gaps that you're talking about between service, are we including under the staffing our outsourcing piece as well?
Yeah. Yeah. So we have taken into account those things that you all are currently contracting out. And as part of the implementation process, there may be opportunities to to potentially contract some services out. But here's what here's what I will say to that. You know, part of what we have done is said, okay, what are you contracting out? What is the baseline capacity that we think you all need to maintain in terms of staffing? Are there clear opportunities that we think you can contract services out now? And the answer to that is no. So there may be opportunities as you move forward with implementation. Ultimately, your department director, your county administrator will will sort of engage in that discussion. And we have had some conversations about that as part of this process has moved forward. But we did take it into account.
Okay. So we kind of we kind of challenged that premise, like, for instance, restroom cleaning. Could we just outsource restroom cleaning? I thought that would be a perfect area to outsource. And what they convinced me of differently is that, no, we need rangers there, and they have capacity if they're there. But if you outsource, that's just an additional cost because you need the same staffing person at the park. And so we kind of played, and we're going to continue to play out during an implementation, of what's the right mix of things that we can outsource versus things that we need to hire staff to be able to accomplish.
Okay. Commissioner Flowers?
Okay. All right. That's fine. Whatever you want. It's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Barry. So before we get into some of the very specific recommendations with each group, it's just important, I think, to provide a little context of what are the what are the positions that we're really talking about? So the study focuses on maintenance and operations. Okay? And really, there's four position types that we're going to spend most of our time talking about. And these are your frontline maintenance folks. Ultimately, the supervisory and management relationships and the numbers that are needed are contingent upon, you know, what your staffing needs are in this area. So park rangers, I know, just to just to make sure we're all singing from the same hymn, so to speak. So park rangers, these are the folks who are assigned to your regional parks and one preserve. They're responsible for general. preserve, they're responsible for general maintenance, so the restroom cleaning, playground inspections, those kinds of things, but also customer service and enforcement. So they're prepping shelters for rentals, they are dealing with enforcement challenges at the parks, which is a significant bucket of work as well. So this is really the largest chunk of maintenance employees that the, the department has. The horticulture crews, so when I, when I talk about horticulture crews, these are the groups that, that perform most of the sort of general landscape maintenance and mowing. Their primary task is mowing county parks on a bi-weekly cycle. Trades crews, that's, that's kind of what it sounds like. This is the group that maintains, you know, mechanical, electrical and plumbing infrastructure, those facilities that exist within the parks. And then your environmental managers and specialists, these, these are the folks who implement your land management plans, so especially in preserve areas, sensitive ecological areas, they help administer and really are responsible for managing those land management plans, which has a heavy focus on invasive management, you know, managing and protecting wildlife and, you know, threatened wildlife within each of the parks and, and native species regeneration. So those are the kind of four groups that we'll talk about. Most of these, of these groups work on 10-hour shift schedules. And this is important, you know, especially as it relates to the park ranger group. So, you know, park rangers are essentially set up so they have at least one park ranger at the park at any given moment. The 10-hour shift schedule provides some, not any given moment, during opening hours. And those opening hours change with the season, right? So the start time of the opening shift and the start time of the closing shift is going to vary depending on the season. So there are periods where crews overlap and all of the rangers are on staff, that provides some extra capacity, but that's just some important context, you know, again, as we, as we move through the conversation. So when we, when we look at the total labor hour staffing need, we really look at it by maintenance groups, so each on the park ranger side. So all the park rangers are organized under seven maintenance groups, and those maintenance groups include a series of parks that are, that, where rangers are, and organized and managed by a chief park ranger. As we look at the current staffing and we, and we apply that labor hour modeling analysis and that leave model, that, that leave usage analysis, ultimately, to meet best practices and account for leave on the park ranger side, there's a need for about an additional 18 park rangers across each of the seven maintenance groups. Now, there are also a few other areas that are not currently staffed with park rangers where some additional, some additional focus and attention is needed. Whedon Island Preserve is really a, a priority issue and a priority area of focus. You know, this is a, an environmentally sensitive area. It has not historically been intended as a park that would receive heavy utilization. And there's no staff assigned to the property. Right now, there are no park rangers managing enforcement, but there have been some significant enforcement challenges. And in reality, this preserve is ultimately being treated by the public as a regional park, right? Attendance has increased dramatically, over 171% over the last three years. So, you know, as we think about how we go about staffing regional parks, ultimately, one of the priority recommendations is to, is to begin to staff Whedon Island with park rangers on a recurring basis, so to replicate the model that exists in other regional parks to make sure that that customer service enforcement and maintenance capacity exists. We also carved out Pinellas Trail as a, as a separate item. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a different enforcement challenge than the regional parks. Unfortunately, there really isn't a best practice kind of rule of thumb that says, you know, this is what you need per mile of trail. So what we really looked at is, you know, what's the, what's the current arrangement in terms of how, how the, how Pinellas Trail is staffed from a maintenance and enforcement perspective? And are there particular adjustments that we can make to better accommodate the workload? And there's a couple of challenges with really the current staffing approach and the, and the, and the shift schedule approach. You know, the first is, you know, right now, Pinellas Trail is staffed with an opener and a closer, so similar to that schedule that I talked about. So they're staffing really during daylight hours. The most heavy utilization of the park is really kind of the commuting period and then the evening period as well, with, with the exception of some weekends. We also have currently, all the Pinellas Trail park rangers are assigned out of one park, which means they spend really an excessive amount of time driving the trail on enforcement, which absorbs a significant period of the day. So, you know, as we, as we looked at the workload, as we looked at the maintenance responsibilities at each park, we've ultimately recommended dividing up Pinellas Trail staffing and, and positioning them to deploy from three different parks to, to decrease that amount of drive time and to, to add some additional capacity of two park rangers to essentially set up a, a target of about one ranger per 20 miles of, of trail.
So you're, in that case, you're, so you're up, you're now at, for rangers, if you will, you're at 20, 24?
24, correct.
Okay, right, thank you.
So the horticulture crew, again, this is, this is the crew that's primarily responsible for mowing. Horticulture right now is divided between north and south operations, so there are essentially, there's a crew of seven folks on the north county, on the north portion of the county, and a crew of seven folks on the south portion of the county, as well as additional staff, temporary staff assigned to Fort DeSoto. The, the service target is to mow essentially bi-weekly, throughout the peak season especially, and as, as the grass becomes dormant, to move to a, to a monthly cycle. Or as needed, based, based on particular growth. Right now, especially during peak season, the, the horticulture crews are really only meeting about a three-plus week mowing cycle, and that's for a number of reasons. One of the most significant issues on the horticulture crew is, is leave usage, again, sort of going back to that earlier point. But, you know, as we look at where to add personnel in this particular area, ultimately we see a need for four additional crew members, and this provides some significant capacity in, in, in an important area. Right now, the way horticulture crew, crews are organized is that full-time staff ultimately supervise temporary personnel, seasonal help in the summertime, during the warmer weather months, who help with the mowing. This provides the capacity to, to break off into additional crews on each side of the county and more consistently meet that two-week cycle. There are still going to be weather issues, there's still going to be equipment maintenance issues that, that will, you know, occasionally sort of bend beyond that period, but ultimately, this will, this will create, you know, significant additional capacity. The other area where this is important is, you know, as we talk about, you know, the staffing level reductions that have occurred really since 2007, there are maintenance issues that have, that, that have compounded. So there are special projects needed in a number of parks to, to sort of beat back the growth, so to speak, and, and regain some of the things that were, that were lost in terms of, in terms of a property or in terms of the condition of parks. So there's some capacity here to, to provide non-peak seasons, so when they move to that monthly cycle, how can you use these personnel to support some of your environmental land management initiatives, land management plans and some of the special projects at the park? So this will, the, this will serve additional capacity in that space as well.
Is this an area that could, on the mowing side, that you could outsource instead of hiring more, more people?
So this is an area that is sometimes outsourced, okay? The question is, you would want to do a, sort of a rigorous comparison of, you know, what are you losing and what are you gaining through that, through that, through that contracting process? And certainly something that, that can be explored. You know, one of the things that we find, and, you know, we do this work across the country, is there, 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 there can be quality control issues associated with kind of contracting the mowing operation. One of the, one of the comparative groups that we, that we compared against was the Woodlands, Texas. And, you know, they have contracted out much of their mowing, and it doesn't have to be that way. You just have to make sure that you have internal staff in place to really properly monitor and inspect those contracts. So there's a, there's a balance, it's not quite as straightforward as, as saying, we're going to contract this out, there's some quality control and sort of internal capacity that you still want to maintain, because as there are quality control issues, or if, and this isn't assuming that there would be, you want to have the capacity to address those as well, so. So on the trades crew, so, you know, the, the golden rule for, for really facility maintenance is preventive maintenance. You know, generate capacity to complete preventive maintenance so that you're not dealing with emergency repairs. The trades crew has really developed a model where most of the major retrofits and, and repairs are contracted. So if there's a, if there's a major facility issue, a major HVAC issue in a facility, you know, a dock or boardwalk replacement, typically these, these things are going to be contracted. Right now, you know, as we, as we sort of go in and look at the work that your, your facility, your trades crews are engaged in, most of the work is proactive, or I'm sorry, is reactive. They're spending most of their time responding to issues after they break, rather than, you know, taking a full life cycle and asset management approach where maintenance is done in advance to avoid a situation where there's a facility breakdown. Right now, as we, as we look at, you know, we completed an analysis of, of work order data, and the ratio preventative to reactive labor hours is about 39% right now. And really, the best practices, best practice from the International Facility Management Association, as well as some of the comparisons that we drew upon, is to really target a ratio of 100%. So basically, basically 50% sort of total focus on preventive workload. One of the other kind of specific and unique challenges that's, I think is unique to your, to your county, is that Fort DeSoto really draws a significant amount of attention from a facilities maintenance perspective. The age of the facilities is such that especially mechanical and electrical systems have a high rate of failure, so a lot of effort is being spent at Fort DeSoto. It's also just the environment, right? It's particularly hard on that kind of infrastructure. And Fort DeSoto is also geographically isolated. For, for trades crews, even on this, even, even deployed from the south county, to, to get down to Fort DeSoto, it absorbs a lot of drive time, they're spending a great deal of time there. So ultimately, what we're recommending is to create a, a preventive maintenance crew that really focuses on doing some of that preventive work, focusing a, a significant amount of tension at Fort DeSoto, and in turn, freeing up remaining trades crew members to engage in proactive and preventive maintenance throughout the remaining park facilities. As we look at the type of work orders that you're engaged in, there's really three specializations. You know, it's the craft worker position, but there's three specializations that are needed, electrician, a plumber, and someone with, really a general laborer, general maintenance capacity, carpentry, concrete work, that kind of thing. So ultimately, this will get us, get you all to a place where you can more, more intentionally engage in those best practices around preventive maintenance. Urban forestry, you know, this is another area that we looked at, you know, and as I, as I mentioned, you know, historically, it's kind of pre-2007, this was a responsibility, sort of the, the park, tree canopy was a responsibility to Parks and Conservation Resources Department. Ultimately, this responsibility and the personnel associated with it were transferred to, to the Department of Public Works. They manage the right-of-way and, and the, the right-of-way trees, as well as a sort of more extensive canopy of trees throughout the county, so there was some consolidation of resources there. Right now, ultimately what has occurred is that the focus of those crews is largely on dead tree and limb removal, so issues associated with very clear and obvious issues. There, there really isn't a preventive maintenance approach or a proactive approach in terms of managing the canopy. So, you know, ultimately, there's a, there's a process that, that, that the, the county would need to go through to define what that ought to look like. We haven't made very specific staffing recommendations in this space. The first step is to really complete a condition assessment, really an inventory of what kind of work needs to occur at the parks and to ultimately, you know, plead it from the terms of a risk assessment. So what are those things that are potential safety issues that are not currently identified? And then ultimately develop a, a work plan and a service level agreement that defines how to get there. There may be staffing needs that come out of that. There may be conversations about, you know, how do we go about, you know, is it best to add personnel in public works? Is it best to add personnel in parks? Is it best to have a contracted relationship to support additional efforts or is there some combination in between? But ultimately, what we've tried to do is just frame an approach to help you all answer that question going forward. The other area on the, on the urban forestry piece relates to palm trees. So they are, they are beautiful. You know, I live in Cincinnati and I don't get to see very many palm trees, so, but one of the challenges is that palm fronds, especially on windy days or after storms, really litter the parks and it absorbs a significant amount of time in terms of park maintenance labor that can potentially freed up by developing a, a more proactive contracted relationship to do some, to do some intentional, some additional trimming. What we've recommended is that you do that on a pilot basis, so look essentially at your beach parks, do a pilot, identify, you know, what's the before and after and what's the, what's the cost of a contract compared to what can you actually save in terms of labor hours to help you all answer the question of whether you want to do it more, more comprehensively.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't, I don't know if this is a question for you or more a question for Barry or maybe Paul, but we live in a hurricane-delted place, and after Hurricane Irma, we were inundated with debris. Thankfully, we didn't get a direct hit. But the fact of the matter is, we had a lot of issues with our contractors because they were canceling, they were just leaving. We had them under contract in the event of such a thing, but they just left the county and went elsewhere because they could make so much more money in another part of the state responding to them. So I guess I'm a little curious, maybe we've already addressed that, but I'd be curious to know if we've addressed that issue, how we've addressed it, how this might differ or your recommendations, because those are the kind of things that are unforeseen, really, that you don't know are going to happen in, ahead of time, right?
Yes, and part, it is kind of tied to this, but it's also separate. Obviously, from an emergency management standpoint, we have contracts in place. What occurred at that time was everybody was using the same contractors. So us in South Florida and Texas all had these large general contractors. They worked to try to modify those. I'd have, have to have staff come back and tell you exactly how, because I'm not 100% sure, but we can address that. Now, to how it would relate to this is, if we're not trimming up our trees and maintaining them on an ongoing basis, we have a lot more debris as a result of a storm. And so there is a relationship, he's really talking about ongoing maintenance, but it does relate back to the impact when we have a major storm. And so I can have emergency management talk about that at their, at their presentation.
Don't forget your speaker. Just don't forget your speaker, we're trying to hear you.
I just said, it would be good to know so that we are prepared and aware because we are heading into storm season and the predictions are that there are going to be many of them forming anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
My pleasure. So environmental program management, again, this is the group that is responsible for many of your preserve areas, your land management plans associated with, 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 with ecologically sensitive areas. So, you know, we looked at potential staffing needs in this area, and, you know, ultimately, you know, we have recommended a number of additional positions across, you know, both trades, in the park ranger area, as well as in the horticulture crew. This is going to ultimately develop some special project capacity, especially during those non-peak seasons. So, you know, ultimately, we're not recommending additional personnel in the environmental program area now because this additional capacity is there. It is something that will need to continue to be monitored, but I did want to make sure and just, just kind of touch on that, this is really important work. You know, ultimately, what we want to see, and we really identified some, some, some opportunities here on the environmental program management side, is to capitalize on some of the expertise in this group, to really focus in work planning efforts at each of the regional parks and some of the areas that aren't necessarily preserves or environmental or, or, or ecologically sensitive areas, but to use that expertise to really focus in and develop a work plan that's consistent with broader land management goals associated with, you know, your all's goal to protect your natural environment. So on the performance measurement and reporting piece, so, you know, you all are obviously, I'm sure at this point, well familiar with CityWorks and, and the process that's in place there. The department has really done a good job, I think, of developing kind of some Excel-based systems to help plan and manage workload, especially on the trade side. But CityWorks is really going to, going to offer a, a great deal of advantage, a great deal of benefit to the department in terms of how they plan their work, what data they collect and how they report, how do they monitor and how they report sort of trends and performance. Again, we've made some recommendations within the report to really refine the work planning process, to take advantage of the tools that are available with CityWorks, to start to frame and focus where park rangers, where horticulture crew, where your environmental land managers, where your trades crew, where they spend their time, how they prioritize the work that they do on a, on a daily basis. There is going to be some additional data collection and data management needs. We've looked at, you know, the potential of taking a couple of project management specialist positions, and these are, these are sort of support positions, analytical positions within the department, and refocusing some of their effort on, on making sure that that data collection process is in place. But this is an area, again, where you're going to have to live into it a little bit, you know, to, to ultimately define, you know, whether there are additional personnel. At this point, we've, we've sort of, you know, identified a way to create some capacity in that area, but also just caution you to, to monitor that as you go forward. So those are the, really, kind of the high-level, the key recommendations. So what does this mean in total, right? You know, in total, right now, in those maintenance areas that we discussed, about 111 full-time equivalent positions, and we're recommending an additional 31 positions. The salary and benefit expense associated with that is, is just north of $2 million. There are also some equipment and vehicle cost estimates, which we, which we pulled essentially from your vehicle replacement fund data. So this is just an initial estimate, it'll need to be refined, obviously in coordination with your budget folks. Now, this is a, this is a big ask, right? This is a lot, there's a lot of folks and it's, there, there's a significant price tag to it. So, you know, as we, as we think about how to prioritize- So, you know, as we think about how to prioritize these staffing changes, you know, what are those areas where adding personnel or increasing staff will have the most significant impact on service levels as experienced by the users of the park, your residents and your visitors to the county? You know, the first priority recommendation is Whedon Island, getting folks in there to really maintain and protect that particular resource. The sort of next layer is to move toward a goal of making sure that each of the 16 regional parks are staffed with four park rangers. That's the minimum number that ultimately gives the department capacity to make sure that there's an opener and that there's a closer, and that the parks are staffed with someone during opening hours. That's really important from an enforcement perspective especially, but also from a quality of maintenance perspective. The next piece is really, how do you go about managing leave? And, you know, there are a number of positions that are required to really backfill that leave. I mentioned that 13 FTE number. The first step to really provide leave capacity or the prioritized approach is to add essentially a floater park ranger position at each of the seven maintenance groups that I referenced earlier. That'll provide some leave capacity, some ability to absorb that leave without significantly impacting operations. It'll also create some special project capacity as well to do some focused projects in each of those regional parks. And then, of course, the horticulture crew. You know, this, again, is that area that is probably the most visible area, that and restrooms, right? The most visible area, the area where your residents and your visitors are going to sort of most quickly notice, you know, deficiencies in terms of maintenance. So as we think about the 31 recommended positions, as we prioritize those, you know, this is really the first tier that will ultimately advance, you know, your resource levels and help you all meet the service standards that you all have established and that you all really expect as part of your community. So, I'll open it up to questions in just a minute. So obviously, we provided the project report. We will also be providing an implementation plan. I know, you know, Director Kazi is working on an implementation approach, and we'll sort of share the details of that. But we'll provide some prioritized, you know, implementation guidance as well, just that will help as you all move forward to consider and, you know, hopefully ultimately implement some of these recommendations.
So, that's a lot of information, but it's something, I think the report, and, you know, really, congratulations Jonathan and his team. I think they did a really thorough job and had metrics to be able to support the recommendations that they made in terms of how we approach looking at service levels within our parks. It's attached as part of your packet, a implementation plan that Director Kazi looked at, because we know we can't just go out and hire, you know, 30 people. It would have, there's major issues in terms of hiring, reorganizing within the way they do work, and so he's come up with kind of an implementation plan we can look at. I just received it, we'll consider it and bring it back to you. He actually has, if you look at that last attachment, that we hire 10 now, okay? And we work on that. And then next year, as part of the '22 budget, then he hires an additional 12, and then going out to '23, hires an additional nine. So, he's tried to look at a phased approach. We'll have more conversations with him about that as we consider the budget, but I think it really gives us a good blueprint to work from and answers a lot of questions and really helps us use data and information as part of our decision-making process.
Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for a very thorough presentation, I appreciate it. You made parks come alive. A question. When you looked at your labor modeling, did you also take into account those singular events that we have that may take a considerable amount of time and a need for additional personnel, but it's not something that occurs all the time?
So, you know, that's something that we consider, but we don't build the staffing model to staff for peaks. Otherwise, you all would probably run me out of this room if I made that recommendation, right? So, you know, we look at, you know, what are those things that are recurring? What are the, you know, and use that ultimately as the basis to build what the staffing model looks like. Now, we also take into account, what are those things that occur unexpectedly, or the things that you know are going to occur but just don't know when they're going to occur, like hurricanes or severe weather events? And as you, as we sort of think about contracting conversations, for example, you know, that's part of the consideration. Do you lose important capacity to deal with those special events? So, you know, we do pay attention to it. If there are pressing issues that we think deserve attention, we will specifically sort of mention that, but in terms of the staffing model, it's really based on, you know, what's your maintenance, what are your maintenance requirements, what are your service levels? There are always going to be things that, you know, curveballs. I'm sure, you know, Parks and Conservation Resources was not anticipating the heavy lift that they engaged in as a result of the pandemic, like none of us were, right? So, but, yeah, so we consider it. If it's, you know, really rises the attention of creating dedicated staff, we will make those recommendations. But ultimately, the model that we recommended, we feel, will get you where you need to be from a service level perspective, provide capacity to deal with those issues as they arise.
I'm glad you mentioned the two, because that's what led, or was the premise for my question, was, of course, whether we can't determine or predetermine what happens there, and COVID-19 was something that we didn't realize would happen, but a lot of people started utilizing the beach areas as an outlet, and so the increased forward demand came about as a result of that. I like the phase-in approach, but I also wanted to know if in your research, did you also address or try to account for any potential retirements from current staff? Because you gave us a staffing number that you thought we could increase, but do we have, is there an issue with anyone, or, I don't want to say a mass exodus, but, you know, a portion of persons retiring that would probably have us looking to increase those numbers?
Yeah. You do, I mean, you do have some folks who have been on staff for quite a while, but I would say, you know, we don't really probe whether folks are planning to retire as part of the process. I would say if issues sort of come up in terms of succession planning, we will bring them up. The focus of this effort was really primary on, okay, service level staffing study. As vacancies occur, there is a need to sort of quickly fill those positions, and as you know retirements are happening, to really try to fill those positions in a timely way so that you're not lagging six months before you have someone in the chair or at the park, right? So, that's kind of an implementation challenge, I would say. We pay attention to see if, we pay attention if those kinds of things come up as we engage with employees, but we didn't draw that out as a particular issue that deserved attention as part of this process.
Thank you, because sometimes there could be potentially some overlap.
Oh, sure.
As you said, that's why I said.
Absolutely.
And then, this is just, you answered my question about the money part, because the budget is there, but this is just a thought process, Barry. We have a number of, University of South Florida, St. Petersburg College, Ecker College, that have some wonderful environmental programs and partnering, let's say, with Pinellas Technical College's Horticulture Program. So, if, you know, the request is you hire four rangers, but we hired two rangers, and they're overseeing that particular program, they're going to be there because it's, of course, they're required. You know, who knows what may happen? They may come on board with the county full-time, but that would, I think, be a way to provide them with what they need for that hands-on experience and a way for us to get what we're wanting out of it, which would be the maintenance of certain areas. Same for some of the other departments, because I know, you know, sometimes they're always looking for those types of venues for usage, so I just...
I think that's an excellent idea. We've done that in certain areas, not in all areas, but working, you know, with Pinellas Technical College and others to find a pathway for people in a career field and kind of develop that and train that next generation is an excellent thing. We've done it in certain areas, we need to do it more. This may be a perfect area to probe more.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your answering my questions. I had a few more, but you answered them, I'm glad I waited. Mr. Chair, you answered them as the presentation went on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard, I did get your comment, you're waiting to talk, Commissioner Seal, you'll be next.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for doing this. I know I've been one of the ones that have been nagging about staffing in the parks for years, because I think parks, our park system has got to be, maybe you can tell us how special it is, you know, for an urban area like this. The number of parks and the, just the amount of land we've set aside is pretty spectacular, I think.
For as dense a county as you are, it's really quite incredible. Great park system, so.
Great. Yeah, and I like the phase-in approach, too. Let's go forward.
Commissioner Seal?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. There were some questions about the PTO, but I guess I'm still puzzled. If we've already had PTO going on, then why is this such a large increase? Are people not taking the time off, or we're not paying out? I need to understand that a little bit better.
Sure. So, your Parks and Conservation Resource Department employees are taking PTO, okay? Ultimately, what that means, though, is that those individuals are not available to provide consistent maintenance. So, the department is drawing personnel from other areas. The bottom line is, is that maintenance is not occurring, and the department is tasked with trying to figure out a way to meet basic maintenance requirements without having budgeted positions there. So, the leave usage sort of factor, those 13 FTEs, is how many positions, additional positions do you need above budget to make sure and accommodate for that leave without necessarily disrupting operations? So it's intended to avoid disrupting maintenance and operations while still allowing your employees to take leave.
Okay. I'm curious, okay, so, you know, remember my historical perspective, and many of you all were not here when we had to cut back greatly because of the Great Recession, and it's shown in the numbers of people who work for the park system, but I'm always mindful of the fact that, and I'm not trying to be critical, but somehow we survived during those years. And now we're saying that we're in woeful condition, and I'm really curious whether we truly are. Are we getting a lot of complaints from the public as far as the parks? And also, you know, we really did ramp up utilizing volunteers. Have we explored that as another option? I am very concerned about ramping this up. I understand why we're looking at it, but there's always needs versus expectations, and I really want to get my hands around that.
Yeah, so, I'll try to answer your question. So, you know, ultimately, you know, the difference between the 2007 numbers and today's numbers, I think is about 186 folks, right? Ultimately, we're recommending increasing 31, so nowhere near the same kind of add-back. You know, I think the benefit of that, or the reason for that, is I think the department has done a lot to change the way they go about their work, to achieve efficiencies, you know, and the circumstances really force that. And I think there's a good model in place in terms of how the department is organized, how it organizes its maintenance units, and how it deploys its personnel. But there is a gap, you know, as we sort of look at the best practices related to this infrastructure maintenance kind of activity, you know, there is a staffing gap. The question in terms of, you know, what residents are saying, I would say, you know, I would defer to, you know, to Director Kazi to sort of mention that, but, you know, our focus really is looking at, you know, best practices in terms of maintenance, looking at your community survey results, that's obviously an important part of the process as well, and there's obviously a clear link between quality and condition of infrastructure and perceptions of quality of life. So that's kind of a, you know, a core, sort of a priority principle as part of our work, so.
But Commissioner Seal, to your point, I think it's a fair point, you know, to really, for us to continually assess this, because you're exactly right. If we did a study like this of every department, we'd probably come in asking for a thousand positions, and somehow, we're, you know, we're providing a pretty good level of service, you know, in a lot of areas. So I think we, that's the reason for a phased approach. We add some, we look at these, and then we assess that before we add more, you know, because I think we have to find that right balance, and going to that peak level of staffing, you know, isn't always necessary. And so, I hear your comment. I, too, wanted to challenge, and I still want to challenge more, where we're going in terms of contracting out versus doing things internally, because that allows you a lot of flexibility, you know, over the years. And that's something I think we can look at more, but I think a cautious approach to the implementation, you know, would be warranted, because this is a significant increase.
Commissioner Long?
Oh, wait a minute.
Sorry.
Have we had complaints? Because I haven't seen any documentation, nor, I have, I've maybe received two emails over the last few years, so, I mean, it's not been an outcry of people saying, "Our park is in terrible condition." Thank you.
I think we get a limited view of that, but most of the complaints that I've heard have been about unright-of-way maintenance, which is one of my questions that I'm going to ask in a few minutes. But Paul, did you want to respond to that real quickly before I come to you?
Yeah, I just did want to expand on a couple of things. One, regarding the complaints, of course, you know, we receive complaints directly, doesn't always go through the commissioner's office, and, you know, just by nature, our staff tends to be reactive, to tamp down those complaints, to address those things. But I think more importantly, when you go look at 2007 and the staffing and the reductions that we had, but what we've also gained from 2007, you know, when we had these reductions, there was no Eagle Lake Park, there was no additional Wall Springs Phase 2, we weren't taking care of the preserves and those types of things. So, while we have tried many models to efficiently address the maintenance needs, you know, it's like trying to run an engine in the red all the time. The staff, you know, gets to a point, they're working outdoors, they're working in the heat, it's difficult to maintain what they need to, and I'm afraid that the end result is it's the infrastructure, things get delayed, it suffers, and then we're spending more money on capital replacements, and we're also seeing people actually leaving as well. Not that we want them to stay as park rangers their whole career, we'd like to see them advance, but it is a difficult job to stay on top of all of the things that are part of their normal, everyday routine, as well as addressing the things that they come across in the parks, whether it's through enforcement or just complaints. So, there's a number of factors that all go into that.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to just comment on Commissioner Seal's historical perspective, because though I was not here during the Great Recession, I came on the commission right after it, and during those first budget presentations, I clearly remember that throughout all of the departments, it was the Parks Department that took the greatest, biggest hit. And so that's my, and I see people nodding, so I want to be sensitive to that, considering it was 2007, now it's 2021. And I, you quickly said that number, and I didn't have a chance to write it down. So what was the gap that you talked about between 2007 and 2000, it was 100 and something, I think you said?
Let me give you the exact number. It was about a 47% reduction.
346 to 183 currently.
346 is what we were at.
Correct.
And 187...
183.
183 is what we're at now. So, my question, as someone who uses our parks a lot, because I have so many little grandchildren that love to go there, and as well as the boating ramps, so now I'm using the parking meters, which are not that great, I have to say. They've eaten more of my money, no matter what I do. You know, I am sensitive to the fact that it is very hot, hard work that staff are doing, and while I recognize that we have made do, I have to think to myself, at what cost, though? Because I do have family members that own a large commercial company that does this kind of work, and one of their biggest issues is hiring new people as their company continues to grow, and I'm wondering if the county is having that same problem in terms of recruiting people to work in the park and do that work? Is that having an effect as well? Is that having an effect as well? Did you study any of that? Because, you know, there's hardly anywhere you can go, anywhere, where you don't see signs, hiring. And with all kinds of incentives, and oh, by the way, huge increases in the wage. So how is that affecting us?
Well, Commissioner, of course, we, we do have turnover, like any other department. I think one of the things that, that we have found, especially lately, you know, people love the opportunity to work in the parks. You know, we get a variety of, of the community that's interested in, you know, retirees from the military, veterans. We hire a lot of veterans. We get a lot of people coming out of community college or college. So we, we do have a mix of people. We've been fortunate. I think, you know, someone said to me, this is the best office you can have in Pinellas County, is to work, you know, whether it's at Fort DeSoto or Wall Springs. They say that now. Ask them again in August. They may have a different answer. But, but we have been, we have been very successful in attracting recruits.
And Commissioners, as you also recall, we are looking very closely at our wage structure and also promotional opportunities. So to where, as people gain skills, they receive higher compensation for those skills. So having those career paths is very important. That's something we worked on this past year, and it's actually being implemented right now.
And so, well, I had a couple other comments. A couple of them just gone right out of my head. But I am very grateful to the volunteers that work in the park, because I'm aware of them and how much they do. And while some of you may have not had complaints about the parks and the service and what's going on, in the recent campaign that I just came through, I did get quite a few comments from folks who volunteer in the park and talk about, no matter what they do, they cannot keep up with what needs to be done. And they were begging for additional help, just because they took such pride in the work they were doing. That said, I also use the trails a lot. And there are certain times when they are pretty shabby. I'm very happy to see that just recently, the section that I walk in and skate in are all cleaned up. But it takes a long time before they come back and do it again. And on the entryway, and I'm not picking on places, this just happens to be where I am a lot, that goes on Park Boulevard out west and crosses that bridge. Those islands there can be embarrassing at certain times, especially as we get into the growing season. So, you know, I do think it's important to remember that in Florida, this work never stops. It's year-round. It slows down a little bit as we get into the fall, late fall and winter. But boy, it sure heats up, and it never does really stop. So those are my comments, and I appreciate the fact that we're trying to look at remedying some of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Commissioner Seal's comments, too. I don't think we're trying to get back to where we were in 2007 necessarily, but we have had some issues with, or questions about safety, about, you know, we have quite a few parks that have no rangers, that have no staffing for people to reach out to when they're there. And we have liability issues. So just on a basic level, we have, we need to be watching our own butts, if you will. I mean, because it's a lot of area we have and very skinny staff to take care of it.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments as well. I thank you, I think Commissioner Long, you just mentioned the volunteers we have. I just, again, I want to echo those thanks to so many folks that just, they love our trails. And we've got, we've got groups of people that are, sometimes it's just a couple, and sometimes it's groups of people that clean the trails, and they get bags of garbage every day. So to those folks, continued thanks. I too am a little concerned with the ramping up on, on costs. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we don't have issues from where we were to where we are. I'm also very concerned about growing government right now in terms of whether it's, whatever it is, cost of living increases, number of people increases, you know, rates, taxes, anything, when we're trying to come out of a, a time that's been very difficult for a lot of folks, whether making ends meet at home or any of that. So that's kind of an overlay to what we're talking about. It doesn't take away from what we're talking about. It just, to me, it's a, it's a big concern. The 183 that we have now, you talked about 111 positions mostly. The other 72 positions, I guess, are mostly staff, administration, the different positions. Overstaffed, understaffed, properly staffed in that area, just as a quick, you know?
Yeah, so, so this, our, our sort of scope of work was focused on the maintenance and operations side. We didn't spend a great deal of time in extension services. We talked to the administrative personnel as it relates to sort of operating and maintenance-related processes. But in terms of completing or detailed staffing analysis in those areas, we did not, we did not.
Fair enough. And then the other question, probably is the same answer. But when we talked about level of service, we've been talking about level of service in our ride-aways as well, and how, how often, I'm assuming we didn't do that inventory. This is just our parks and our.
No, that's, that's over on the public work side, and that's, that's a Transportation Trust Fund.
And that's coming as well?
That is.
Okay. And, and, and does that include road maintenance, road cleaning, too, Barry?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. And then, just as a side, it's really nothing about what we talked about today. And I've, I've asked to get some information from Paul about, he's, you've given us some on, you know, like how, how do we do in this county from a park standpoint? You know, environmental land standpoint, open area standpoint, as a percentage of our total mass? You know, how do we stack up? Because we've been through this last year or two. We have a lot of people saying, well, we're, we're turning this county into a concrete jungle. And, well, we have a lot of parks, whether it's county or city-owned. Do you have an assessment in general, kind of how we stack up as a county, which includes city and county parks and such?
Yeah, so, so in terms of, you know, a land use kind of comparison, that wasn't really part of the work that we did. But, you know, what I, what I would say, though, you know, when we think about the approach to work, when we look at maintenance goals, operations goals, land management goals, the internals, again, those standard operating procedures, the goals that the, that Parks and Resources is really striving to attain are pretty consistent with best practices in a, in a lot of other areas. They're just not staffed to meet those goals.
Okay, all right. And that's just a general comment. And maybe we can get some, still get some of that city information. I, I think it's important to understand where we are. I mean, that's what you started this whole thing with, where are we today in a special area? But where are we in terms of parks and recs? And what do we need, are parks and conservation land? And, and, you know, what do we need to be doing to make sure that we're up to those standards? So anyway, just wanted to give you, just throw out a couple of my comments as it relates to, you know, expanding right now in additional costs and ramping up and, and all of that. So we'll, we'll be interested to hear some of these other areas of concern that we've, that we've addressed as well. So Charlie, did you have anything before we?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and apologize for being late. Had another meeting. And, and I, I appreciate the conversation that I heard coming in and some of what I heard in the car. But I remember, gosh, it must be six, seven years ago, when we were talking about parks, and we were talking about that maintenance issue, and maybe this is probably more for Paul. And we were talking about the, we weren't able to do the traditional mowing of the full parks, and that we were just doing kind of the pathways. And that actually, and this, don't take this in any way except for what it was, but the, the, the lack of mowing in some of those areas brought some animal life and some horticulture life back from, because we had been cutting it down. Now we're seeing growth. Where, where are we as far as, way back when are we cutting it all? Are we still leaving some of that natural, more natural untended areas? Or, do you remember that conversation?
I sure do, Commissioner. Yeah, what we referred to as no-mow zones. And of course, that was one of the changes that we made after the reductions, because, one, we didn't have the capacity to do that. We still maintain no-mow zones. We're trying to be a little more selective. And, you know, one of the things that the report that Jonathan's group did addresses, one of the areas that we kind of like to approach, and that is to actually put some real environmental purpose behind those no-mow zones, rather than just let them go through natural succession to something that might include invasive exotics. But his report talks about wildflower plantings and, and things like that, that can be self-sustaining. So, you know, that is one of the things. And just to go, go back to a couple of other points that were mentioned, volunteers being a big one. Certainly, our department has relied on volunteers. We're the largest user of volunteers pre-COVID of any department in the county, over 100,000 hours of volunteer time. But one of the things we also have to, to remember, volunteers aren't meant to replace paid staff. You know, volunteers, we certainly use them where, where we can. But we try to use them to supplement the work of paid staff. You know, certainly, there, there are some volunteers who will gladly clean a restroom. It's not really something that we're going to ask them to do. So that is an important distinction. And volunteers, while, while they, we do have a lot of them, they're not an eight- or 10-hour worker. Most of them are a two, three, four-hour worker, once or twice a week and that type of thing. And then also, when you touched on the number of employees, the 111, as Jonathan mentioned, are those people who actually are doing that frontline service work. You know, the remainder of those 72 employees, you know, they include the extension staff, Heritage Village, as well as lifeguards, aquatic safety, those types of folks, and the Business Services Center, the people who answer the phone and, and take reservations and do all of that stuff.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Any other questions right now?
Well, this, this was a big one, obviously, because you've discussed this for several years. I think from a consultant standpoint, from Jonathan, they did a really good job. And it's a blueprint. It's, it's here for us to use, however we want to use it and whatever level. But it gives them some goals and objectives and the data to support it. The report is a lot more than, than what you, you have on your presentation. And, and we'll provide that report to you as, as a, when it's final in its entirety. And so you can see that, and you can kind of see the details that Paul was talking about and others. But it's a good blueprint. What I also wanted to say, though, is, you know, having a consultant that really digs into those details and is able to support that is really important. He did a good job with that. But you're not, this isn't the last time you're going to see him, because he also did an analysis of our fleet. And, and they dug into some of those details and looked at, at operating practices and things like that. So they, they've delivered for us. They've done a really good job. You'll see him again when we talk about fleet and, you know, where we're going with that. So again, I appreciate his efforts and, you know, that we'll certainly be able to use this going, going forward.
And your, that 72-page report, is that your complete report?
That's the one. Put it under your pillow at night.
Okay. Yeah, well, I don't have to. It's, it's in this form. So we have that.
Okay, good.
All right. So anyway, any other questions?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Shane Quinzel. We're with Strategic Performance Management from the Office of Management and Budget. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things from this particular study and hopefully answer some questions that you all had today. First off, I would like to address that, you know, the Office of Management and Budget did start a little service project by doing our own internal research before handing it off to NOVAC. And I can support that. We did a time study. I know NOVAC did a time study as well. And both concluded that, based on the existing levels of service and standard operating procedures that Paul Kazi's department has adopted, which is based off of trade associations, national trade associations like NRPA, we were not able to meet those standards of best practices with the existing employees that we have today. So there was, there was a consistent time gap in what we have currently, both in my own research and also in Jonathan's. And then the other thing I'd like to address as well, when we're talking about the actual acres that, that we have versus our peers, I can tell you, based on, on research from, from NRPA, we do have about 21.5 acres for every 1,000 residents, which is, which is actually pretty high for a, a county that's as dense as ours. So much kudos to the green areas that we've been able to protect in Pinellas County. But we do fall a little short in terms of our total acreage when we look at peers throughout Florida and including in the Tampa Bay area. We have approximately 21,000 acres. Of the peer study that I conducted, I can tell you, we, there was about 26,000 acres on average for Parks Department, both in Tampa Bay and in similar counties in Florida. And for their average staffing levels, it was about 237 employees on average. And for us, it's 181. So this still puts us below the peer analysis average that I conducted. Thank you.
And those acreage numbers, those are unincorporated or an entire county?
That is the unincorporated Parks Department that they manage.
Okay. So the 21,000 acres and the 26,000 acres of land is, the 21,000 acres is what we manage or what we have?
Yep. And that, and that would include our preserves, park acreage, so active, and then our passive, which would be our preserves and our environmental lands. And we tried to do the best we could to compare apples to apples. So when we would talk to like a Hillsborough or a Pasco, we would incorporate both their active and their passive lands so that we could get an estimate as to, you know, how much they were actually maintaining versus what we were maintaining, so that we could get the most accurate numbers that we could. Things that were not included would be like recreational parks, like ballparks, soccer fields, things like that, that we don't have, so that we could make that, that peer analysis as close as possible. We didn't want to inflate the numbers with services that we just don't offer.
We, and we just, we happen to be a county with a lot of cities and a lot of acreage in those cities as well, compared to Hillsborough, which is pretty heavy on the unincorporated. So I just was trying to compare, again, these numbers, 26,000. I like the per-thousand-resident comparison, because that kind of takes a little of that, kind of corrects it a little bit. But, thank you. Anything else did you have? Anything else?
No, and I'd be happy to, you know, provide you all with updated comparison on, on density numbers. I don't have them in front of me right now.
That'd be great.
Based on my research, I can tell you that the 21.5 that we do have was actually fairly high for the density level that we have in this county.
And when you compared that, that was pretty, compared against light counties, not, you know?
That was actually compared to NRPA's data, which I will admit, they traditionally focus more on the cities. But given how dense we are, it's, I would say it's a fairly, it's a fair comparison.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, I would, just going to echo, I would love to see that data as well. And also, if you, if you have access to it, just the, maybe the overall budget of that particular county to, to get a true apples-to-apples. Because we always get, we always get compared to Hillsborough. They have a slightly larger budget than we do.
Well, they're going to compare themselves to us, but, you know, we'll see. Now that we can get to that information.
Okay.
If we can, we can move on. I know you're going to get hangry here. And we've got, we've got to move on to utilities, and we've got several other departments. Jonathan, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Paul, did, Paul, did you have anything else? Are you, are you, you good? All right. Thank you. Sorry about that, Barry. Just want to make sure. Okay. All right.
All right, next up is, we'll, we'll do a shifting here of resources. And Veronica will come up, and Megan and.
Hey, Barry?
Yes?
I just want to, we're not going to do working lunches, so we'll take a break. A half-hour break. Just want to make sure that you've got that timed. Okay.
Yeah, we have that, we have that built in. It's just a little later lunch today. We're trying to get two departments done in the morning. We didn't know exactly how long that would take. If we want to, if, if, if you think in the middle of the presentation, we should stop, take a break, we can, however you want to handle that is fine.
Let's go to about 12:15, 12:30 and see how we're doing, and then.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
So go ahead. So go ahead.
Thank you. This is going to be the Utilities budget presentation. Leading the presentation is going to be Veronica Etelle with the Office of Management and Budget.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, just let me know, because I tend to speak softly, so please, you can always wave at me.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so, so good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Veronica Etelle. I'm the Operating Budget Analyst for the Utilities Department in OMB. And with me today from OMB is Erica Mitchell, who's going to be covering the CIP information, and Shane Kuntz on the performance summary. And then we also, from Utilities, we have our Director, Megan Ross, and Hillary Weber is next to her, who's the Deputy Director for the Utilities Department. Just really quick initial acclamation to the, what's in Granicus and the attachments that you have. The, this is item 11? I'm sorry, 21, 843. I need to put my reading glasses on, sorry. So I'll be walking through, my notes will largely go along with what is in Attachment 1, that's your written summary. I will not necessarily cover everything, because you have that information. And there's a couple of new pieces of information that I'm going to provide today to you also.
Veronica, when you said that you're following BIS Utilities Analysis?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I forgot that didn't have an attachment number on it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Yeah, BIS Utilities Analysis. Okay. So with the two service programs, water and sewer, the Utilities Department operates one water treatment facility, distributes clean drinking water to more than 112,000 customers. They collect wastewater from approximately 84,000 sewer customers and then operate two facilities for the treatment of that collected wastewater. And then they provide reclaimed water to more than 23,000 customers. So I'll start now. I'm just going to give a very brief overview of the entire department. So we have the magnitude of water and sewer and the entire operations combined. And then we're going to follow with the program level for water and sewer. So the FY22 Utilities expenditure budget request totals $237.9 million, which is overall an increase of $11.8 million or 5.2% over the FY21 budget of 222, 226.1 million, sorry. The two overarching things to point out here, there are no decision packages for the Utilities Department. They're not asking for anything new, not adding services. And their department staffing level is not increasing. That's staying flat at the 429.9, full-time equivalent positions that were approved for FY21. So the total combined operating budget, so out of the 237.9 million total, the operating budget side for combined water and sewer is $152.1 million. And in your summary, you'll see where I have broken it down by programs. I'm not going to go into operating and personnel and everything by program. I'm going to give you the bigger overview here, because everything really pretty much applies the same as far as personnel. The total salary and benefits for the entire department, water and sewer, is going up $1.0 million, which is 2.7%. And that is largely the general wage increase that is countywide, that you'll see in virtually all the departments that are coming forward. And then it also includes the Career Ladder Initiative, that Utilities was one of the first departments that kicked off that initiative, and that has been implemented in FY, in the current year, FY21. So, but you'll see the full year, you know, the personnel includes the full year of expense for that Career Ladder Initiative. Wanted to point out, there's a new no-cost staffing initiative. The department is partnering with the Sheriff's Office to create, to work the jail-to-job pipeline program, work that into the Utilities Department and twofold, you know, create opportunities for people that are coming out of jail, but also it'd help us fill some positions that are typically hard to fill in the maintenance area. So got a win-win there. The operating expenses overall are increasing a net of $2.9 million or 3.2%. And that's largely, the bulk of that is $2 million for the wastewater collection system plan that you all just received a presentation, I think it was May 6th in your workshop. There was a presentation on that. And the overall contract, I'll get to that in a few minutes on sewer program, was also approved with Wadrim. So a big part of that is the consulting work that's ramping up. Okay. Capital outlay is increasing 1.7 overall, 1.7 million, sorry. That fluctuates year-to-year, depending on the vehicle replacement plan. There's no new vehicles or anything like that. Then wanted to just point out, with the 2020 refunding of revenue bonds that we just did, the sewer debt service for FY22 is decreasing $483,000. That's going down from 14.6 million to 14.1 million. And the savings in the current year that we've already experienced is about $948,000 for this year. So, and I think I put in there, maybe I didn't put it in my notes here, the overall savings that we're expecting from that refunding over time. I'm sorry, I will find that, though. It was in the neighborhood of $5 million over time for that refunding. Then the combined water and sewer, so I just gave you the overview of the operating, the combined water and sewer CIP program for the department totals $85.9 million, which is a net increase of 6.7 million or 8.4% over the increased approved budget. I emphasize net increase because sewer expenditures, the CIP project requests are going up in FY22 some and then going down a little bit in water. So you'll see a higher increase in sewer than this net overall increase. And this is new, excuse me, this is new information that I was working on for, in conjunction with the CIP. In your Granicus Attachments, Attachments 7 and 8 are updated. Working, is a working draft of the forecasts for the water and sewer funds. So I'll give you a second to be able to kind of find those. I'm not going to go in depth about it, but I wanted to bring that to your attention as we start talking more about CIP and future planning. So these working drafts, water is Attachment 7 and sewer, I think is Attachment 8, these now incorporate all of the adjustments that have been made for the six-year CIP plan that's being proposed for FY22 through FY27. And Erica will talk about this a little bit more, but there are some increases in projects. And the more we know about our infrastructure needs and the more that we go into working on our wastewater collection system plan, you know, you may see these things shift. But right now, that sewer CIP is going up some. The forecast is reflecting that. And what it's also reflecting, and this was not unanticipated, is a potential inter-fund loan transfer from the water, the water renewal and replacement, which is the water CIP fund, to the sewer CIP fund. And that is something, when I talk about the revenues a little bit, that is something that we have been anticipating. What you'll see on those two forecast documents, attachments, is what, right now, I think, would be the potential cash flow for the need to borrow that money. And that's starting in FY22, since additional in '23 and '24, with payback to the water fund, potentially starting in FY27. So it's primarily a cash flow situation, but, you know, the thing to keep in mind as we go forward, as we develop the budgets more, is that, and I'll talk about this in a minute, the rate, the rates that we're in right now are effective till FY23. The wastewater collection system plan is going to be coming forward. There's going to be a lot of additional information available to us as we put our FY23 budget together. But this is how it looks right now for FY22. I'm going to keep, of course, refining these forecasts so that we have a good update for you with the proposed budget in July. So these numbers might change some. I don't think it will be dramatic, though. And then we'll be bringing a resolution forward to you requesting approval to do that inter-fund loan. And it may not, you know, it could be that it could be something other than an inter-fund loan from water in the long run. But right now, it looks like our water CIP is in very good position with its fund balance to be able to support that and then get paid back from the sewer fund. Erica's going to talk a little bit more about the six-year CIP programs in just a few minutes. So now I'm going to shift to revenues on the broader picture. And as I was saying before, the rate plan that was approved by the board in 2019 is in effect FY20 to '23. The annual increases in water and sewer were flat at 1% a year for water, 9.5% for sewer. And the retail was, you know, fluctuated and the FY22 increase is going to be 5.9%. I think Megan had mentioned to me that on the water, that 1% is not really experienced by most of the residential customers. Okay, I'm going to make sure I don't misinterpret anything.
Say that again, please.
Was it, did you say?
That's correct. The 1% increase on the water side is predominantly going to be, it's really the base rates that are going to be increasing. So 94% of our customers will not experience a rate increase on the water side, because we are obtaining that revenue from scaling our base rate based on your meter size. So the larger commercial customers who were before paying the same rate as residential, you know, even though they had an eight-inch meter, they were still paying the, you know, the $6.40 a month. We're going to be scaling those up to be consistent. It's something that a lot of utilities are doing now, just to provide more fairness in those rates.
And like I said, there's a couple of new pieces of information, or not necessarily new information, but something I wanted to focus on that I didn't have in the write-up before. Just want to reiterate, the current rates that were developed and that we're working on right now, were developed looking ahead, knowing that the needs for the particular of the sewer CIP were growing and that we had our aging infrastructure that we were going to have to address. So that was part of that 9.5% increase that you see with, in the current rate structure. The planning acknowledged, the planning that we've done with that and with the rates that we have right now, were acknowledged in a recent Moody's Investor Services report. They noted that our A, capital A, lowercase a2 bond rating, AA2 bond rating, is one grade higher than the AA3 median rating for the rest of the wastewater system. So we're a little bit better than the US median on those ratings. And then also...
Veronica, one second, I'm sorry. Could you just say real quickly what the predominance of our residents are going to experience in wastewater increase? We just said nothing much in water, but how about wastewater?
Wastewater will be the 9.5% increase.
That is, that is what most people will be experiencing?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think it's going to be really important that we dictate or we communicate what we're doing to justify such an increase. Because, I mean, it's just, you know, not that it's not expected, it's just, it's not going to be expected to them, right? So we just make sure we're clear on that. Go ahead, Veronica.
Okay, yeah. And then just the last little thing about our ratings. I think this went out a couple of months ago, that the Fitch ratings, they affirmed our bond rating of AA for the Fitch ratings and had revised our outlook from stable to positive. So we're doing very well. And actually, I don't think, I did want to just read this one little quote from the Moody's, that our bond rating is higher than the median for the rest of the country on wastewater systems because of our strong manageable debt profile and healthy debt service coverage. So that's, you know, really obviously very important. The next rate study is scheduled to start in calendar year 2022 and finish in early 2023 so that as the current rates approved through FY23 are done, we'll have the rates recommendation set for the FY24 going forward. And that is part of the contract that was approved with Wadrim for the wastewater collection system contract, planning agreement, has the rate study built into that. And I believe you all heard a little bit about that at that May 6th workshop, that StanTech is working with Wadrim to be able to do that rate study for us. So that's all set, just get started. Another thing about revenues, there's, for FY22, there are no proposed changes to the water or sewer user fees. These are things like taps and meter installation, backflow prevention devices. The user fees are getting a comprehensive review as we speak. We're working with StanTech on that as well. And so for the FY23 budget, we should have a very comprehensive recommendations on updates to this water and sewer user fees. Okay. And now I'm just going to shift to talking specifically about the water program for a moment. We already talked about the 1% increase in rates there. Just wanted to point out, while you have that 1% increase, the revenues you'll see laying pretty flat. They're really only going up about $200,000. And the reason for that is, in part, it's reflecting the fact that we have had conservation efforts and that some of the, I think, it was Pinellas Park that has bought less of our wholesale sales. So the good news is, you know, conservation is impacting things. It's not, so the 1% is, I guess, kind of helping us stay stable in the midst of losing some revenue to conservation.
Veronica, do you happen to know, like, our cost of water? I was thinking about the raw product that we get from Tampa Bay Water as a percentage of the overall cost. Is it, just to give me a sense of...
No, you're reading my mind, absolutely, yes. Yeah. In fact, yeah, I can stop there because that's actually finished with that point. So 54%, I think this is in your write-up, but 54% of our annual water program operating expenses are for the Tampa Bay Water purchase. So that's our purchase of water. So, which, you know, that's...
No, that's a sizable piece.
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
And that's been pretty flat. I think that rate's just going to have a minor adjustment.
Yeah, there's a fairly minor on the rates now. I'm still trying to analyze what, you know, what I'm really seeing there, because I just started working more closely with Utilities for the last two or three months. And I want to go back and really look at Tampa Bay Water. I know they've been tracking things, so I want to get a really good handle on that. They are increasing the rate.
Just real quick, for this next year, for '22, the rate is going to increase by 0.17%. So a very small fraction, but as Veronica stated, she's going to be analyzing that impact of that. I think they're still looking at future rates and really planning some of those capital projects to understand any kind of rate increases beyond that.
And the growth in the other, the growth in the other counties has, helps us too. So, you know, on the true-up, truing up those numbers a little bit, Hillsborough's growth and Pasco's growth help keep our rates, I guess rates is the wrong word, but it helps relieve pressure on us as far as that raw product is concerned.
Yes, every year, they conduct a true-up to determine if their projected consumption matches the actual consumption. And like you said, because of the growth in Hillsborough and Pasco Counties, we typically get some money back at the end of the year because of that.
Go ahead.
I mean, our percentage share of their fixed costs should go down as others go up in that, because of that. It's very, very interesting. And then just the last thing to point out there, we already had $43.5 million in our FY21 budget. And we've left it at 43.5 million right now. The cost estimate that we've gotten from Tampa Bay Water in their presentation to us, they're estimating our cost is going to be about 43.2 million. From what I'm seeing, I don't think it's going to be that high, but because of the rate increase, I can't say that for sure right now. So we're leaving that 43.5 as it is now. If I see that we might need... If I see that we might need anything more because of what we're looking at, we'll absolutely let you all know before, before the proposed budget in July. And then just the last thing, you know, we touched on conservation. One of the efficiencies that utilities is very proud of is their work on the conservation, water conservation with, and with Tampa Bay Water. So again, how that helps us is, you know, obviously in terms of, you know, keeping our resources for the future, not wasting them, but it also, for us, it's going to hopefully be a cost avoidance in the future as Tampa Bay Water, you know, they're having more demand from Pasco, Hillsborough. They will still have needs for their CIP and their infrastructure, but by having strong conservation programs in place, that may help with some cost avoidance for Tampa Bay Water, which will get passed on hopefully to us as the customer. So I'm going to shift to Shane now. He's going to talk a little bit more about some of these water program initiatives that you see in your, in your outline, or in your summary, I'm sorry.
Morning, again, commissioners. I wanted to highlight a couple of the water program initiatives today with you. PCU is currently updating the water system master plan, and it is under a contract awarded up to $705,000. And PCU leadership is expecting to have a final report of that master plan later this year. The result of this effort will be a comprehensive system assessment with long-term prioritized capital improvement program plan that will ensure optimal and efficient timing of infrastructure improvements and alignment with strategic plan initiatives. Another thing I really wanted to point out is a new focus with this plan is that it will include criticality consequences of failure metrics, and it, that will help us with data-driven assessment management decisions. We are anticipating the completion of this master plan update this year, and with that, additional funds have been allocated to CIP. The advanced metering infrastructure, commonly referred to as AMI, had a request for a proposal that closed in April, and we are expecting the selected consultant to go before the BCC or you all for award approval later this year. AMI is going to allow for improved customer data access. It's also going to allow us to safely and more reliably collect data out in the field, and it will greatly improve our systems management overall. AMI is built into the water and sewer project budgets and has an estimated cost of $48.5 million in the CIP plan from FY '21 to FY '24. Currently, county staff are replacing meters throughout the county in FY '21 with new AMI technology. The last initiative I'd like to bring to your attention is the water, reclaim water and private sewer policy manual, which has not been updated since 1987. PCU is actively working on that and I believe still waiting feedback from the BCC regarding their next steps on policies. And really, the goal of this is going to be to reflect the most recent PCU policies, our contemporary changes and best practices. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Erica to cover the priority water program, CIP initiatives.
That meter cost, that $48 million, does that, does that obviously keep us from having to manually read now? I assume we either drive by or we get the information remotely? How do we, how is that done?
Yes, so the AMI program, the advanced metering infrastructure program, will have an integrated network so that we will be collecting that data through a network. Currently, we still do manual reads for the most part, and we also have started implementing some automatic meters which require the drive-by system. So that's on a certain percentage already, but the AMI will be a fully integrated network. So real-time data transmitted and used for billing as well as other demand management activities.
And it also can identify when you have a problem, when you have a leak. And so there's a lot of benefits to this. I would love to see them implement this as rapidly as possible.
Yeah. We're doing that in the reclaim system, too, my understanding.
Yes, we are.
Big time issue with leaks, so I think that'll help big time. Okay, go ahead.
The proposed multi-year water CIP plan is increasing by $16.2 million. This increase is mainly due to anticipated projects that will kick off from the water system master plan that Shane just mentioned. There are also two proposed projects, water main improvement projects included in the multi-year CIP. These projects are the Vena Del Mar Water Main Improvement Project and also the 127th Place Water Main Relocation Project. That will be done in conjunction with the City of Largo as part of their roadway improvement projects.
Do the other commissioners know those two capital projects? I don't want to necessarily dive into those details, but, I mean, I would like to understand what they are. I don't even know, you referenced them, and I'm, you could just refresh my memory real quick on those two.
Sure. So they are included in your water attachment number three.
Okay, thank you.
And they are on page, page three. They are the third and fourth projects.
Okay.
The Vena Del Mar is going to replace old and deteriorating cast iron pipes, galvanized pipes that are currently exposed to harsh conditions, and install other public safety and water quality improvements. And then the project with the City of Largo will replace and relocate our old existing water main that will be in conflict with the roadway project that the City of Largo is working on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And now we'll move on to sewer.
Okay, so we're going to go back now to the sewer program revenues. In total for FY '22, sewer is, revenues are projected at $97.9 million. That's an increase of $6.4 million or about 7% overall in the FY '21 budget, from the FY '21 budget, which was 91.5. So we're going from $91.5 to $97.9 million on that. And that does reflect the annual rate increase of the 9.5%. We do have a grant award that we just got that we wanted to draw attention to. It's not a huge amount of money in the grand scheme of things, $106,000, but what it means is great for us. It's, they're helping us invest in some electrical improvements at the South Cross Advanced Water Reclamation Facility. So, and this could, this could, we're hoping this is like a phase one, actually, and we'll hopefully show some great results and come back. It's, for us, the bigger part than the, the bigger payoff than the $106,000 investment from the state is the $85,000 a year savings that we'll be generating with that, with that grant. So for the sewer expenses, the total sewer program combined operating in CIP is $11.5 million over our '21 budget, and so the FY '22 budget is at $130 million, again, combined water, I mean sewer operating and CIP. On the operating side of that $11.5 million increase, 3.2 is operating budget and 8.3 is in the FY '22 CIP. The, I spoke a minute ago about the wastewater collection, but there are really kind of two things to point out about consulting services in the sewer operating expenditures. One is the regional resource recovery facility feasibility study. That's budgeted at $440,000 in FY '22. The consultant's been selected, but negotiations are underway. The agreement is not set yet, but that, that's in progress. And they will become, the utilities department will be coming to you for approval of that agreement later this year. So I think you'll hear a little bit more about this maybe in solid waste presentation as well, but, you know, the initiative is that we're going to try to design facility with our stakeholder partners in the community, the municipalities and the solid waste services. And I think Erica may touch on this a little bit, too. We do have design costs, estimated design costs programmed into the CIP for sewer at $3.5 million, but in FY '23, I believe.
Veronica, hold on one second, please. Commissioner Seal had a question.
Just connected, Ellen. We're going to get her back.
Oh, you lost her? Okay, well, let me know when she's back. Go ahead, Veronica.
Okay. And then the other, again, you know, we touched on this, the biggest component of all this is, is the engineering consultant cost for the wastewater collection system management program. That was budgeted at $500,000 to start things in FY '21. It's budgeted at $2.5 million in FY '22. This is, again, the Wade Trim contract that was approved March 9th, and that is a total $9.4 million contract over five years. And the additional programming has, we've been anticipating and programming in additional funds in the CIP. We'll see where things go with that plan, obviously. Because the, I think the contract was awarded maybe a little bit earlier than anticipated, they're actually getting started on that now, so our cost in FY '21, you know, will go up a little bit, too, but it's still, the magnitude of the contract is still capped at that $9.4 million. So it's really just a timing issue. We're getting started earlier on it. Was Commissioner Seal back on?
Not yet.
Okay. And then just really quick, the last thing I wanted to point out in the sewer operating expenditures, again, is that we have the debt savings of the $948,170 in FY '21, an additional savings of $483,665 in FY '22. And then this is where I wanted to say that over the life of the savings from those notes, we're expecting $4.9 million net present value, and if we convert to tax-exempt notes with that, our savings should go up to $5.3 million over the life of the loan. Was Commissioner Seal able to get back on yet?
They'll give me a-
Okay. So, and then just very quickly, this is something that I had wanted to make sure I point out. Our debt schedule, this doesn't show up in our forecast right now because this isn't going to happen until FY '29, but right now we're at about that $14 million a year for the notes and bonds that we have. When we get to FY '29, based on the schedule right now, we'll go down to about $5 million. So that's just something that, you know, we'll be keeping in mind as we forecast and look at all this. This is something they'll be looking at with the rates study that they do and with our future CIP. It's all going to come together, also looking at, at some of those notes that are going to be paid off in 2029. And we'll drop almost, you know, about, at least $9 million a year in cost at that point. So all of this is going to be coming together as we get to the end of our official forecast period. And I'm going to shift back to sewer program now.
Hey Barry, I think it might be a good idea, we're having some technical issues with Commissioner Seal, that we take our break now. We'll come back right to you when we're finished, when we get back, say about, we're going to shoot for 12:45, so it'll take a half hour.
Okay.
Take some, get some lunch, and then-
I should ask the question, is it here? Yeah, okay. So, so we'll try to fix that technical issue, because this is an important area. I think she needs to be a-
It's a big area, so we, we'll take a break, we'll come back.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, everybody.
We're going to go ahead and get started back. And, uh, turn it back to our utilities team.
Okay.
Okay Veronica, you're up, so if we can start us off by where we're at, what document, what page, and then we can start back up, kind of reorient everybody to where we're at.
Okay. So, we're going to go into talking about the sewer CIP, so in the BIS analysis summary document.
Commissioner Seal, I assume you're with us?
Page eight.
Yeah. Yes, I am.
Okay.
They just put a different picture of me, sorry, I don't know why.
I don't see you anywhere, but, um, and we're just, we've talked water, I don't know where we, when we lost you, but we're now kind of doing the, there you are, we're doing the sewer, we're just going to the sewer CIP, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So this is page eight of the BIS analysis document from...
So the very first document, the BIS analysis, and your attachments, and so we're on page eight.
Yes, page eight, and then the sewer CIP's attachment four?
Attachment four, correct.
The detailed program is attachment four.
On the first item, the first very top item. Nope, the one before that. Okay, I think we're all set.
We're all set? Okay, great. The multi-year proposed CIP, sewer CIP, is increasing by $71.6 million. This increase is due to anticipated projects that Veronica mentioned that may come from the wastewater collection system program, in addition to the 11 new projects being proposed. These new projects include $3.5 million in design only for the regional resource recovery facility, we're going to look at getting construction estimates as well. It includes four South Cross projects, and six sewer gravity force main projects. Two of these sewer gravity force main projects are emergencies that will occur this year. Those are the King Fisher Drive, Belcher Road, and Crescent Oaks Boulevard. So that's all I have for the sewer CIP, and I will turn it back over to Veronica.
Okay, and I just had one more thing that I wanted to mention from OMB. The state legislation, this was on the last, I think this was our, there were some potential threats on the last page of your budget analysis document, your main document there,
We're going to go ahead and get started back. And turn it back to our utilities team.
Okay.
Okay Veronica, you're up. So if we can start us off by where we're at, what document, what page? And then we can start back up, kind of reorient everybody to where we're at.
Okay. So, we're going to go into talking about the sewer CIP. So in the BIS analysis summary document.
Commissioner Seal, I assume you're with us?
Page eight.
Yes, I am. They just put a picture of me, sorry. I don't know why.
I don't see you anywhere, but we've talked water. I don't know when we lost you, but we're now kind of doing the, there you are. We're doing the sewer, we're just going to the sewer CIP. Okay. Thank you.
So this is page eight of the BIS analysis document from.
So the very first document, the BIS analysis and your attachments. And so we're on page eight.
Yes, page eight. And then the sewer CIP is attachment four.
Attachment four, correct.
The detailed program is attachment four.
On the first item, the first very top item. Nope, the one before that. Okay, I think we're all set.
We're all set? Okay, great. The multi-year proposed sewer CIP is increasing by $71.6 million. This increase is due to anticipated projects that Veronica mentioned that may come from the wastewater collection system program, in addition to the 11 new projects being proposed. These new projects include $3.5 million in design only for the regional resource recovery facility. We're going to look at getting construction estimates as well. It includes four Southcross projects and six sewer gravity force main projects. Two of these sewer gravity force main projects are emergencies that will occur this year. Those are the King Fisher Drive, Belcher Road, and Crescent Oaks Boulevard. So that's all I have for the sewer CIP. And I will turn it back over to Veronica.
Okay. And I just had one more thing that I wanted to mention from OMB. The state legislation, this was on the last, I think this was our, there were some potential threats on the last page of your budget analysis document, your main document there, page 10. There were several threats. The one that I just wanted to give you a quick update on, and you may have heard this already, but I wanted to make sure I shared it. The Senate Bill 64, which was the state legislation on the surface water discharge elimination, did pass the House and Senate, and it was enrolled in April 24th before the end of the session. So that will be something that we anticipate to be costly for us in the future. The one good thing that happened with, at the end of that legislation was that they did push the effective timeline out from 2021 to, or 2022 to 2032. So we do have more time to work on those plans. And we will certainly be looking for any help we can with state or federal funds. And then, and that's it for OMB. Pass this over to Megan for some closing information comments that she has.
Yes.
Yeah. And this is dealing with our discharge into open waters? Yeah. I think we still have to have a very general plan submitted by the end of this year. But, you know, there's a lot of work still in progress. Commissioner Seal, are you raising your hand for?
No, we just needed for Mike on.
Oh, Mike, your mic on.
I'm sorry.
Now turn it on.
Thank you.
How rude of me. Sorry.
Okay. So, thank you Veronica. And good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the board. Megan Ross, Director of Utilities. Just want to take a moment to thank Veronica, Erica, and Shane for their in-depth analysis of our budget today and their continued support throughout the year. The budget presented to you today reflects the priorities of the department, which primarily include infrastructure strategy and support, customer satisfaction, and employee leadership and development. These priorities are aimed at fulfilling our mission of providing high-quality services for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water. On the first priority noted, infrastructure strategy and support places a large emphasis on our wastewater systems. This includes both wastewater treatment facilities and collection systems, with the primary outcome being to protect water quality through the reduction of pollution caused by sewer overflows, while also providing reliable wastewater and reclaimed water services to our customers. This initiative is demonstrated through our wastewater collection system program, our wastewater facility master plans, and the implementation of our reclaimed water system master plans. We're also making significant progress advancing our drinking water systems through investing in our infrastructure. This is demonstrated through our Gulf Beach Pump Station Upgrade Project, which will begin in fiscal year 22. This project will ensure dependable and reliable delivery of drinking water to our customers throughout the beaches. In the North County, we are going to continue on the North County Booster Station Project to upgrade equipment there to better manage demands. We're also continuing a water storage tank rehabilitation program to maintain structural integrity of our water system infrastructure. Our capital budget also includes funding for the advanced metering infrastructure project, which was noted earlier. This will kick off later this year and will provide leak detection, advanced billing functions, and an improved data set for demand management for both our drinking water and our reclaimed water systems. These initiatives, along with the continued collaboration of Tampa Bay Water, will further our ability to continue providing high-quality services for drinking water. One of the collaborative programs I would like to highlight is the Tampa Bay Waterwise Program. This incentivizes water conservation through offering customers rebates through water-efficient devices and appliances. A regional project currently in the planning process is the development of our Regional Resource Recovery Facility. In partnership with our neighboring utilities, Solid Waste, and other stakeholders, this facility will aim to beneficially reuse waste streams and eliminate the need for land application of biosolids generated by wastewater treatment facilities throughout the county. Next, just want to touch on some improvements we've made to enhance one of our highest priorities, which is customer satisfaction. This year, we implemented real-time direct messaging through our Everbridge System, which notifies our customers in the event of a service outage via text message or phone call. When an outage is first detected, impacted customers are notified with an estimated time for repairs, and subsequently, customers are notified after service has been restored. Our improved utilities bill design has added enhanced visualization of water usage information as well as the ability to add ONcerts, which allows for targeted messaging to customers. And it also provides for a lower cost for notifications relevant to the areas served. We've also made significant strides towards supporting employee leadership and development. Along with the career paths that have been implemented, we also kicked off a multi-year advanced leadership program aimed at providing skills and competencies our staff needs to be promoted within our organization. The program is designed to combine competency development with practical skills training and is bolstered by participants being paired with coaches comprised of various leadership staff throughout the county. By doing this, we hope to leverage the knowledge of existing leaders throughout the county. Wanted to go back real quick to some of the discussion on the rate increases on the sewer side in particular. Just want to note, these are largely driven by those capital investments that you're seeing today on the sewer side to help mitigate and prevent SSOs. I know it's been a while since we've presented that plan back in 2019, if you recall, that StanTech presented that plan. And even with these rate increases, we are still right in the average of our total bill for, among our regional utilities. So the impact is really, every year will be dollars per month. Just wanted to note that. And in closing, I just want to thank you for your time today and be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. And I think that, I was just going to ask you how we compared. So that, you kind of said we're in the average range with our rates. And again, I think perhaps when we see everybody back again next month and then the following month, that we can summarize carefully, like, when I looked at, I'm looking at your CIP details here. And at the end of the day, it looks like we're going to be, total CIP dollar-wise for this coming budget of 50, was it 58 million? And then it goes to 49 million, 53 million. So we have a substantial investment in our sewer infrastructure. And whether it's collection or our facilities, I think it's going to be really important to give, if not comfort that their rates are going up, that comfort and a sense of confidence in their system, you know, as it relates to laterals and keeping all the excess water out of our system, which helps us with backups and all of that. So it's really going to be, I guess, a first-rate commitment to infrastructure, which most people, at least if they can understand what it's going for, they can at least, you know, be somewhat understanding, I guess, of those rate increases. So I think that'll be really important to highlight, and maybe highlight specifically what we're doing where, some of the major things, so.
Yeah, and that's really important. I think what we've seen is when we take people on even tours and show them the projects and show them what we're doing, there's a better understanding. So definitely ramping up public outreach will be important. So we'll definitely be doing that. Also, just want to note, one major event next week is our wastewater stormwater partnership steering committee event, which will be available virtually. So we'll be promoting that as well. And that talks more holistically, not only about what we're doing in Pinellas County Utilities, but also our partner utilities throughout the county. So I think it'll go a long way.
Yeah, and certainly in this arena, wants versus needs, it's pretty much all need. So you're not like, this isn't extra unneeded, needed work. Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you. And I just did share my concerns with Barry, so I would like to share it now with the rest of my colleagues, because I don't know if I'm the only one. But I found this type of presentation, while I am so grateful for all of the hard work that you all put into putting this together for us, but it seems to me, and this is not my first experience dealing with our county budget and making sure that I could formulate my questions properly, but we usually have the slide that you're referencing up on the screen or on our screens, so we can better follow where we are and where the numbers are. And in this presentation, I had a very, very difficult time finding the documents that were being referenced on my screen here. And so I'm just wondering if when we do come back, could we please have the words match the slide and have the slides up so we're all on the same page? Because I don't know if anybody else had a problem following it, but it was very difficult for me. Maybe it's my eyesight, I don't know, but these numbers are so teeny.
No, we can modify that. Under the BIS document, it was there, but this one is a very complicated one.
It is complicated.
It was very complicated. I was having a hard time following stats of presentation because there's so many different funds, so many different things. But we'll try to align that to where we can walk that through.
That would be great.
So you can follow along in the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a tough enough topic as it is. I mean, to try to get your hands around the different elements and pieces and then following something that you all are so close, you have been living this for a while, and we're trying to quickly get up to speed. So thank you for your patience with us.
Can I have one more follow-up? And I'm curious, given the, as the chair made reference to the fact that this was such a big investment for the county, is the new infrastructure package that's being talked about in DC, are there potential dollars for us there in terms of covering some of these upgrades and things that we're going to be continually doing? Do we know yet?
Yes, there, well, so the current, you know, the $350 billion that was recently released as part of the COVID relief package does contain an emphasis on water and wastewater infrastructure, as well as broadband and cybersecurity. So definitely poring through those documents that are available to start aligning some of those funding requirements with potential projects. So absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
And that is one of the areas, it's 150 pages to the document. We're going through that to look at the eligible costs. Then we'll come back to you with a plan regarding our thoughts regarding how we prioritize and spend those funds. 150 pages, that ought to take you a weekend, you know. Yep. I looked at Bill, and I think he made a dent in it, but you know, needed to get his brain wrapped around it a couple of times. I'm kidding, obviously. Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. When we're looking at the installation of new pipe or repairing of pipe, are you also taking into account any inventory for extended life and use of pipe by implementing or infusing institute form or other things so that, you know, we're on a cycle where we're repairing those things that are like really critical, but buying us a little time so we can kind of spread the cost out so that we can maybe look at other revenue sources to try to help, rather than always looking at increasing the cost of sewer or water services to our constituents? And the only reason why I'm asking that is, I do understand what the chair said earlier about us, about him having hesitancy on increasing costs or staff or things of that nature. But not just with the county, but overall, you know, a dollar may not seem like a whole lot, no pun on you, but for some people, that's a loaf of bread. So, you know, if you're going to increase your service provision, somebody's going to be looking for an increase in their revenue, in their income stream. So are we doing things like that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And we absolutely employ the Kieran Place Pipe Lining. It's a great way to reduce costs. It's, I think it's somewhere on the average of 40% of what it would cost to replace a pipe, and it extends the useful life of that asset by 40 years. I mean, it's essentially a new pipe within a pipe, without having to tear up the road. And so very much reduces costs. We use lining quite a bit. We're also going to be looking at, as part of the wastewater collection system program, at capital improvement prioritization. We're hoping that we can look at how we prioritize projects in a way that might assist with meeting our objectives while effectively how we schedule these projects so that we can have the least amount of impact on the rates as possible. So we're going to be looking at all of those avenues with that mindset. You know, we do want to look at affordability and make sure that that is an important component going forward.
And I do understand that even with Tampa Bay Water, with the very nominal increase that they're looking at overall, less than 1%, that is very helpful to us. And I appreciate that, but you know, just thinking long-term.
And I know they are looking at, trying to look at efficiencies on how to contain their cost. And if you look through this budget, you don't see any additional staff, any additional. And so it's all in the capital portion. If you look back, in 2018, we spent $28 million, 2019, $19 million. Now next year, we're talking about $58 million. This is a pent-up demand for infrastructure. That's the reason the rate is driven by that. It's not increasing staffing, it's not increasing operating, it's all in capital and that assessment that's been done. But I, we are very cognizant of the impact it has on rates, and especially as we look at some of these federal funds that are available, well, that, you know, if we're successful in those, then that'll minimize any future rate increases. And so we'll certainly put our eye towards that and getting anything available in state and federal grants.
And I see the sewer CIP, the ebb and flows in there, you know, we're a very old county, so some of our infrastructure is very old and needs to be replaced. So I would take that into account for some of the projects, the way that the financing has gone. So I agree with what you're saying, Mr.
We've, and when we, at Tampa Bay Water, we've had other communities that haven't necessarily invested in their water infrastructure, and their rates are unusually low. And in recent years, they've actually found that they needed to invest big time. They were having leaks every day, someplace in the community that I'm talking about. And so they've had to make major, major investments. And I think to your point about a pent-up, we've been doing it okay with that investment, but I think we've realized that there's that pent-up piece that we got to catch up on. And I certainly would support anything with respect to infrastructure solidification and making sure that we don't have those backups when we have them. And the sewer lateral discussions that we're having to try to minimize that infiltration and the stress on our system. So it's critically important area, but it is expensive. And we all have to, well, anyway. And just, I had one other question. Is there anything in the planning dollars, and I didn't go through all of this either, so it may be right there for me to see. We're talking to our city partners about the potential of a MRF, of a facility for recycled products. Maybe this isn't in utilities, this is more public works, or maybe solid waste coming. Solid waste, which is coming up. Yeah, and so my question was on, would be on the biosolid facility, specifically to that end. We have ours, but I know there's been communities that have talked about coming up with a joint facility.
That's correct. So we've been pelletizing and selling and marketing our biosolids as fertilizer for a number of years. It's coming on 20 years. But many of the other cities, you know, we only own two of the wastewater treatment plants, and there's, you know, 13 total in the whole county. So many of the other cities are still employing land application, which is a viable option. But with the implementation of some of the provisions in the Clean Waterways Act from last year, they are limiting areas throughout Florida where those biosolids can be applied due to some of the water quality concerns that they have. So the Regional Resource Recovery Facility is really aimed to look at a regional approach to biosolids and to beneficially reuse, you know, not only our biosolids, but all the biosolids generated in Pinellas County. So we're working with our cities on that program.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I know, everybody's pointing to me. I'm so focused on the conversation. Sorry, Commissioner Seal, apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was cut off before the break, and so I don't know whether somebody asked about it. But when we get the presentation for the AMI proposal, I'm hoping that we have a couple options, one, each of which would give us a return on our investment. If it is a $41 million investment, that is a pretty good chunk of change. And I don't know whether we're outsourcing all of it, or whether we will be hiring staff and sourcing it per se. So I'll look forward to the presentation on that. And then going to the Regional Resource Recovery Facility, which was touched on, consultant is estimated for $400,000, design is estimated for $3.5 million. Do we have any kind of capital overall budget that we're anticipating that this plant will cost? And for some reason, I thought we were also looking at a regional, this is an additional question, at a regional recycling center.
Yeah, on your last question, I did just ask that, and we're going to address that under the solid waste presentation. Correct.
Okay.
But to your other question, Barry.
Sure, I can touch on a couple of those. On the AMI, we'll certainly include those components within that presentation. And as far as the ROI, the return on investment, we currently, many of our meters, nearly all of them are at their end of useful life, so we would have to replace these meters anyway. But as far as a return on investment, we do see that more accurate metering can assist with some of those more accurate billing, and so could impact our revenues in a positive way. Additionally, as far as the outsourcing question goes, the AMI network, you know, it requires a network integration. So it's much less than just a meter change out, the physical meter. You actually have to build out a data network. So we are going to be outsourcing it for that reason, so we can get some performance guarantees around that whole system to ensure that the functionality is there. And so hopefully, but we'll make sure to touch on those two aspects in a little bit more depth as we move forward. The program is in the procurement process right now. And so once a vendor is selected, we'll be negotiating that agreement with them. As far as the Regional Resource Recovery Facility, we don't have a firm capital cost of that facility. And the reason is, we still have to understand the technology that, we have to go through a technology selection process, and that's really going to have a large impact on what that total capital cost will be. So as we move forward, we'll certainly, you know, make sure to keep everyone, keep the board updated as we progress through the project. And if we do, you know, we'll have to look at how the whole financing plan will work, because if we are going to be partnering with the cities, we're going to be looking at, is there going to be a shared capital investment from those cities? Or will there be an upfront capital investment by the county? And then subsequent, we'll be charging, you know, tipping fees to those cities as they come in. So we're going to be looking at different financial models for that facility as we move forward with the project.
So what are the cities that have not been pelletizing? Are we the only ones? Or how many others are already taking care of their biosolids through some kind of methodology other than spreading it out?
The City of Largo is the only other city that pelletizes their biosolids, and they do sell them as fertilizer. The remaining cities utilize land application.
Okay, thank you.
What can I say? Oh, quit it. Quit bragging. I'm kidding. That's great, though. It is. Well, I mean, we, I think the City of Dunedin actually tried to get some emergency space in there in case we had to have it, because we weren't sure about these rule changes that were coming. As we just found out on the open water issue, we don't know. They could come down with the same kind of approach on this land application next year or the year after. So we have to, I think this is an important area that we have to be ready for, for all of our cities. Anybody else on utilities? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to public works. Another small department. Getting the big ones knocked out right here in the first day. Okay. They're throwing us off here. No, you're fine. You're fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Next up is Public Works.
Pull it closer to you.
Oh, sorry. Next up is Public Works. Abigail Lloyd is with us to lead the discussion. Abigail actually joined our team in September, so she's new to this, but you wouldn't know if know if I didn't tell you that probably. So a lot of pressure. I also will be helping with the presentation today. Just, we, our analyst who usually covers the environmental side of Public Works is actually out on maternity leave. We also have Shane Kuntzel with us again. He's here all day today. He's our performance analyst for Public Works. And Kelly Levy, the director of Public Works, is also here to help us out today. Abigail?
Thank you, Cecilia. I like to sit with Kelly. So Public Works is one of the largest departments in Pinellas County, and we typically have two analysts, like Cecilia mentioned. We're also going to be joined by our performance analyst and Kelly Levy, the director of Public Works. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with the department purpose. Public Works provides essential vehicular, pedestrian, and drainage infrastructure, as well as management and protection of critical natural and urban environmental resources for the residents and visitors of Pinellas County. Go ahead.
Let me orient you to the correct attachment that you'll be looking at. Sorry, we got a little ahead of ourselves. So if you're in your, your Granicus file, it should be your first attachment, and it's called the Public Works FY22 Budget Summary Analysis, BIS final. Got it? Okay. Abigail, you can.
Thank you, Cecilia. And I will frequently update where we are currently on this document, so you can follow along. So we're going to skip down to pass the executive summary into the FTE counts. This is on page two. You'll notice that the current Public Works FTEs are displayed by program and fund in the chart. Between FY21 and FY22, the total FTE increased by .6. This .6 represents new management internship positions in the customer service division. And this was part of an approved decision package during FY21. Additionally, there is a total of 3.2 positions that shifted to the general fund from the Transportation Trust Fund and the Surface Water Utility Fund. This adjustment was from the creation of an assistant director position, which is split-funded, and a grant worker position that shifted from the Surface Water Utility Fund and is being repurposed for and funded by the CDBG MIT grant, which we'll discuss shortly. And there was adjusting of several other allocations for various other positions in the department. So we're going to move on to revenue, which is at the bottom of page two. Revenue for Public Works comes from four major revenue sources. The general fund, air quality tag fee fund, the Transportation Trust Fund, and the Surface Water Utility Fund. The total revenues for Public Works are decreasing by 2.6 million or 4.8% compared to 21. The general fund revenues are increasing by 775,000. This is mostly due to that community development block grant mitigation, which was a $650,000 grant to create a countywide flood mitigation plan. And this grant was awarded by the State of Florida's Department of Economic Opportunity. Additionally, water and navigation permits collections are expected to be higher than they were in FY21, based on the previous year's trending. Moving on to the air quality tag fee fund, these revenues are decreasing by 104,000. And this change reflects the tag fee receipts for FY21, tracking with FY20 receipts. The State of Florida held back about 6% in funds for the tag fee fund in FY20, and this is a precautionary step due to COVID-19. So in FY22, the budget reflects a very similar conservative approach. The Transportation Trust Fund revenues are decreasing by 3.3 million compared to the FY21 adopted budget. The revenues in the trust are currently declining in FY21 due to a decrease in fuel consumption during the COVID-19 pandemic, and gasoline tax revenues have not rebounded to pre-pandemic levels yet, and it's unknown when they will. The impact on Pinellas County gasoline tax revenues during COVID have outpaced State of Florida projections, and therefore the FY22 projections have been made conservatively and reflect stagnant revenues. As a reminder, we're going to present a presentation, a staff recommendation following this presentation, on how to address the Transportation Trust Fund projected deficit for FY22.
Abigail, hold on one minute, please. Barry had a comment.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay. See, you're so, you're already picking up on his, on his, go ahead, go ahead.
That's a good thing.
We're going to move on to the Surface Water Utility Fund. These revenues are remaining flat with no expected change in the rate for FY22. And also, from a performance perspective, the surface water governance and rate study is underway, aiming to look at current rate structure and program and find ways to improve and possibly include major drainage. So Cecilia's going to discuss the FY22 projected expenditures for the department, and then we'll provide an overview of the individual divisions.
So the expenditures are on page four of your attachment, or the analysis. So overall, for the department, Public Works expenditures are increasing $1.7 million, which is a 2.1% increase over FY21's revised budget. The personal services is increasing at 2.7%. This also includes our 3% pay adjustment on the midpoint of the salaries. The FY21 estimate that you will see on that chart actually includes the career path alignment for FY21 and, excuse me, inequity adjustments. FY22 does not yet incorporate those career paths, but those will be incorporated before the proposed budget.
And just for commissioners, because you'll see this in a lot of the larger departments, where it has a pretty significant impact. In a lot of our entry level positions, some had career paths, many did not. We, we moved up the entry level wage to $14 an hour. It was at 1,250. We also then aligned that with career ladders to where if you, you know, if you're in Public Works and you get a certain certification, then you can get a bump in pay. So it was important to, to flow these in to where you didn't have compaction between people that had been here two or three years and people hired in. The goal is to move that up to $15 an hour next year, but it provides an opportunity for those that are here to go into those career ladders over time and skill sets, and so you don't have that compaction. So that was the planned migration of where we're going on addressing some of these entry level jobs and truly making these career paths, you know, for a long career here in Pinellas County.
Okay. I'm still on page four. The operating is increasing by $1.4 million, and that is predominantly due to the BTS cost allocation plan that increased for FY22 due to city works expenses and services provided by BTS for the, for the software and the structure. Capital outlay is actually decreasing 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars. The, the major contributor to that is the completion of the Roosevelt Channel Five Improvement Project, and it was part of the restatement that was brought to the board for the CIP back in January. It's estimated to be completed this fiscal year, so you'll see a decrease in the 22 budget to account for that. And then finally, our transfers to other funds, you'll see an increase from zero to 1.7 million for FY22. This is actually, has been a recurring expense from the Transportation Trust Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. And what it does is it transfers ninth cent fuel tax to the CIP fund in order to support the ITS and ATMS projects and the capital fund. We did not program it in in FY21, just based on the impacts we were receiving from COVID and what, and the pressures that we were already seeing on the fund. We have programmed it in at this time for FY22, just continue to support those projects. With that, I'm going to move on to the Environmental Management Division. It starts at the beginning of, starts at the bottom of page four, and then we'll contribute.
Hold on one second.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a quick question. On the $1.4 million increase, and you said it was primarily because of city works and BTS? Is, is that, and I should know this, but where are we at as far as the, I'm blanking, asset management? Is that part of what all this is?
City, the city works is part of asset management, you know? So they, they had a phased implementation that they did over several years, and so this was last year and this year's piece.
And is that a one point, are we gonna, when, is that leveled off, or is that 1.4 million going to be snowballing? How does that work as far as our future years?
Our BTS, all of our cost allocations are actually two years, for expenses two years ago. But, so you'll see that with our general fund cost allocation or BTS cost allocation. So it's taking actual expenses from FY20, and we're appropriating the, back to the BTS fund, the, the cost associated with that for FY22. And there is a phased approach to it, and I'll let Bill talk a little bit more, because I think he's more familiar, but utilities, part of utilities and a portion of Public Works were the first two in the phase one of city works. And Bill, did you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yes. I, I know you want to understand whether or not this is going to escalate year over year, and it's not. This is a little bit higher than it probably will be on a recurring basis moving forward. The project is, as far as Public Works and utilities, substantially completed. The other phases, which are primarily parks, is the biggest, next one is coming through next year. And as far as asset management overall, city works is the tool that we use to be able to manage that program. But asset management is a program itself. And when we have Jeremy Wall come out and talk to you for his budget information session, he'll talk a little bit more about exactly what's happening with the asset management program and where we're at in terms of getting that program implemented overall holistically, and then what the benefits are that we're going to realize as a result of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think you were kind of also going to the original projections in terms of staffing. Any new, so we cut that off last year. And so any new request will come in as a decision package. It's not, it's, we're not, you didn't pre-approve those. We, we said no. We, so they, there was a lot fewer positions than originally projected, and then we'll just bring those back individually. So you'll see those as part of any future budget. Okay.
So moving on to environmental management, begins at the bottom of page four, and we'll continue on to page five. This division is, includes air quality, coastal management, ecological services, water navigation, water quality monitoring, and watershed protection. Overall, they're decreasing by 3.2%. This division will be completing the vulnerability assessment of critical infrastructure this fiscal year, and has also been working with OTI to develop a web-based tool that allows for project managers to evaluate risks to capital projects from sea level rise. And this will help in planning our CIP. This tool is expected to be complete later this year and presented at a work session in October. Additionally, they've been working with BTS on a data automation project. This was actually a $100,000 non-recurring cost added in FY21 to automate this process. It's, the intention is to reduce time from sample collection to reporting of results from the water quality. Currently, it takes about six months to do from, for this cycle, but with the project implementation, they're hoping to reduce that down to two months. This is expected to be completed later this year, and is hoping to make the department more efficient in meeting regulatory requirements and being more responsive to data requests from citizens and partner agencies. I'm going to turn it over to Shane to talk a little bit more about some performance in environmental management.
Thank you, Cecilia. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to discuss the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. Pinellas County has maintained a rating of five for the past couple of years, which, what does this translate into for our citizens? It means reduced premium reductions for special flood hazard areas. For a rate of five, that's actually a 25% reduction. For the SFHA areas, for non-SFHA areas, it's a 10% reduction. Due to some recent changes in criteria in their rating system, we may actually go up to a score, I'm sorry, go down, that's a positive direction, to a score of four, which would give us an additional 5% premium reductions on those special flood hazard area premiums. So that would actually increase us to 30%. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Cecilia, and she's going to discuss the Division of Stormwater and Vegetation's budget summary.
So now I am on page six. Stormwater and vegetation. The Division of Stormwater and Vegetation includes our mosquito control, vegetation management, urban forestry, and surface water management. So a lot of these costs are what you'll see coming out of the Surface Water Utility Fund, included in the budget for 21 as a million dollars in watershed management plans. This is in line with what we typically have budgeted each year. We move through a process on that. We have a list on your document of the ones that we have programmed in for FY22. Brooker Creek and Lake Tarpin are in their final years of the, the plan, and will be, will not see rollover. These are typically three or four-year plans that they work on, so we see a portion. And a, a large portion of that is reimbursed by Swift Mud or our partners as we're conducting Also, a large portion of this division is the corrugated metal pipe lining. And this actually, don't mean to bounce you around, but this is at the top of page seven. We will go back with a couple of performance things to page six in a moment, but top of page seven. Our corrugated metal pipe lining and replacement program is programmed at 2.8 for FY22. This is part of the original level of service that was adopted with the Surface Water Utility Fund assessment. The target for achieving that level of service is to line or replace 2.4 miles of corrugated metal pipe per year. At the time that the level of service was adopted, there were 24 miles identified that would need to be addressed. We are actually behind that target, because in prior years, we had, for the main reasons, prior years, we had some contractor issues that I believe have been sorted out by now. And at the end of FY20, the department was at 82% of the original level of service goal. And I say original, because over the past few years, there's been a couple of more miles of pipe identified that also need to be addressed. So to meet the total level of service for all 26 miles, the expected completion date will be in FY25. There, you will see a decrease in the budget for, and this is in capital outlay, there's a decrease in the budget for FY22. And this is also due to the CIP restatement that happened in FY, excuse me, in January, that carried forward some additional funding for this project that was left over from FY20, increased the revised FY21 budget. So we'll see a reset in FY22. Shane?
In the middle of page six, I'm going to cover a couple of work plan initiatives that Public Works is, is currently conducting. And it's the Lealman and Palm, these are two separate work plans, Lealman and Palm Harbor Regional Stormwater Facilities and Policies. For Lealman, a engineering study was produced to the department in April of this year, and it is also going to have a developer stakeholder meeting in, on June 25th of this year to receive additional feedback on the draft credit system. A final report on this project is expected in August of this year. The initiative includes assessing regional retention needs and potential sites for developing an acquisition approach and a regional retention plan that will include a stormwater treatment credit system. For Palm Harbor, they are on track to complete the preliminary study for developing the regional stormwater policies and facilities by September of this year. I'm going to hand it back to Cecilia, and she's going to discuss a couple internal support programs in Public Works. And that will start on page, at the bottom of page seven.
Barry? On that Palm Harbor piece, is that the latest update? I mean, in terms of getting that, that stormwater system or that, not only, I guess, approved and reviewed and so that Swift Mud is able to give permits on that? I just was.
Well, there's actually two pieces to that. This is for the additional stormwater regional retention. But Kelly, help me out with where we're at with, we were recalculating what we currently have available, and we believe there's capacity there that, from, you know, from when it was originally calculated, that would help with, with some of the immediate development needs.
Yeah. We were just taking a look at, you know, obviously, that regional stormwater facility in Palm Harbor was constructed quite a while ago, and just making sure that all of the calculations matched, you know, the permits, and making sure that we were covering the entirety of that downtown Palm Harbor area, so that we were in, you know, we met the permit conditions, so that, that the next step was to identify expansion of that facility. That is what this report is going to finalize, is recommended expansion of that existing facility and the additional stormwater that can be treated by the expansion. So there was one part, again, it was validating the existing, and then the development of the expansion.
But if there's, if there's capacity within the existing that was unaccounted for, then that would both address some needed needs, and then that would be factored into the long-term plan, which is the expansion.
Yeah. And again, just, just for today, for, for the developments that are out there right now, I know. I know I got a call from one person that is saying, hey, you know, we, SWIFTMUD won't give us a permit because they're waiting for calculations on the existing stormwater. So I was just wondering, the developments that are being discussed now or that are being considered, are they likely to be included in the original? Once you've done the calculations, are you feeling that it's going to be, it'll cover those developments? Or, I mean, I know, I'm not asking the questions specifically enough, but...
If the, if the specific project you're talking about is within the boundaries of the original system, then we believe that everything should be good. You know, if there, I would, I would just ask that either they touch base with Nancy or reach out to us because that, that particular validation has been completed. So if there's something that we can provide that'll help that move forward, then we can do that now.
Yeah, I think, in fact, after he, they called me, I put him in touch with Nancy, so hopefully that's being rectified, but...
Okay, if he's within the expansion area, then, then that might be a different answer.
Yeah, it's right, it's right on Florida, towards Alt 19. So I'm thinking it's part of the original, but we'll see.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're going to keep moving through the document, starting on page seven. I'm going to go through four divisions that provide internal support to Public Works. There were no substantial changes to their budgets or performance items to highlight outside the reports provided. But a quick summary of what these divisions do. The Division of Construction Management is responsible for overseeing the construction of the county's capital projects for Public Works Utilities and Parks and Conservation Resources. The Capital Improvement Division is a newly organized division that includes transportation engineering, stormwater engineering, and engineering support. And previously, previously, this work was done in respective divisions, but it's been organized under a centralized model during the fiscal year '21. The Customer and Technical Services Division is an area responsible for asset and work management, facility maintenance, safety, procurement, inventory management, business support, and also responds to the concerns of Pinellas County residents. And the Division of Survey and Mapping provides services and support for over 50 capital improvement projects across the county. And this includes services related to intersection, sidewalk, roadway, bridge, pipe replacement, and drainage improvements. And I'm going to move on to the Transportation Division, and this is on page 10 in your document. The Division of Transportation Operations provides design, construction, operation, and maintenance of all traffic control devices, roadways, and sidewalks. It's funded primarily by the Transportation Trust Fund, which is the revenue source that's collected from taxes on gallons of gasoline purchased in the county. And as you've heard us mention earlier, the fund is facing stagnant revenue and has a projected deficit during FY '22 of $3.3 million. And we will be proposing a staff recommendation after this presentation. I want to clarify that the items that are going to be discussed in the staff recommendation are not accounted for in the current budget submission that you have in the materials in front of you. So some highlights, you heard Cecilia mention about the $1.7 million transfer. Starting in 2007, we would make regular transfers to the capital projects from the, from the Transportation Trust Fund, and this is ninth cent local option fuel tax revenue, which is for ATMS and ITS operations. The total operating budget for ATMS initiatives in fiscal year '22 is expected to be $5.6 million. I'm going to hand this back to Shane.
Thank you. On page 11, I'm going to highlight a couple work plan initiatives that deal with the Transportation Division. First one I want to highlight with you all today is the implementation of the Traffic Signal Mast Arm Hardening Plan. Back in 2019, the board did approve a $4 million FEMA fund grant, funding grant agreement. And this has allowed us to strengthen the mast arms at 16 different intersections with arms that can withstand up to 150 mile-per-hour winds. Groups one and two are expected to go to bid this year with group three in May of 2022 with a complete implementation and, of this program by September of 2023. Public Works is also on track to complete the FY '21 Intersection Murals. This was done in partnership with Creative Pinellas and began with a pilot in FY '19. FY '20's program was completed in March of this year, and FY '20's program is expected to be completed by September of this year. And also, the Pinellas County Trails Visioning Document is on track to be completed by June of 2021. This document is going to act as a guide for future trail projects and priorities, and it does have both consultant and public input.
Excuse me, excuse me, on that, is that going to address our priorities as it relates to construction of overpasses for the trails?
The trail visioning effort, you know, has a multitude of different chapters, and there are sections in there on infrastructure improvements and maintenance activities. We are continuing to work with Forward Pinellas on prioritizing those overpasses so that when funding is available, we can implement them as quickly as possible. But they are identified as priorities not only from a traffic safety perspective. They're also, we also heard loud and clear from over 2,000 citizens who participated in this visioning process that trail overpasses are preferred ways of crossing major roadways, you know, for, for safety. We also heard a lot about, about the accessibility that they provide. And this item, this trail visioning, is actually on your agenda for a work session on June 3rd.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, we had some extended conversation at NPO on this. And, and the, and the overpass at 580 wasn't on their priority system. I just wanted to make sure that we have that opportunity to connect with you all as we go forward, those overpasses and getting too far out on our, on our trail and not taking care of the safety issues along the way, I think are important. So we did, we were able to get that one added as a priority for, for our NPO group. And so it'll be added to the one at Gulf Bay, going over the Causeway, and then the one down on Roosevelt. So those were, they were already a part of it, but this one wasn't in countryside, so we, we were able to add that. But I think that visioning conversation, I'm glad we're having that on June 3rd so we can all kind of get back together. We haven't talked about it in a little, in a little bit, so.
Yeah, and we, we meet regularly with Forward Pinellas staff. Just, it's just the staff level would, of course, is involved. And, and we meet and we talk about a variety of topics, but trail overpasses seem to be on our agenda almost every, every month, so.
Well, normally, there's, there's very little dissension at NPO, but with this particular issue, we had a 7-6 votes to not approve the, the, the plan without adding that. When we added that back in, then it improved unanimously. So I wanted to thank Commissioner Seal for, we were really pushing that pretty hard. So anyway, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll finish up with a final performance measure that we'd like to highlight. Public Works in FY '20 successfully repaired 90% of reported potholes within 72 hours. And the total expenditures for pothole repair in FY '21 has been budgeted at $44,000.
Did you say sidewalk repair? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, it was a joke. That's nice to know that potholes get repaired so quickly.
Right.
It'd be nice if we can fix those sidewalks quickly, too. I did get, I think I shared with you, I got a call from somebody that told me about a sidewalk and said, well, I was told that it would, they would be out in a year to fix it. And I was like, you know, you're almost embarrassed. So I'm glad, I'm glad that we all recognize the importance of that program being fixed. So, anyway, go ahead.
Well, I'll actually go ahead and speak to that. We had it listed under our potential threats, but since you started the conversation, I'll, I'll go ahead and just touch on that now before I hand it off for decision packages. But sidewalk trip and falls do continue to remain high alongside a growing sidewalk maintenance backlog. This backlog represents structural failure of sidewalks and impacts safety and obviously functionality as well. A loss of safety and functionality results in service disruptions, accessibility restrictions to a site, and of course, increasing injury to our visitors and residents.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, I will pass it back to Cecilia, and she's going to go over the five decision packages Public Works is requesting this year.
The summaries of these start on page 11, but I do want to orient you back to your agenda item. There are more in-depth details on these decision packages if you're interested in looking at those. Let me tell you what they are. It's Attachment Five, Decision Package Summary. So if you, there is more information there than from what I'm going to be speaking to at this point. So the first decision package is a fiber infrastructure expansion program. This is intended to be a pilot project for $550,000. It consists of installing high-fiber capacity cable in existing Pinellas transportation conduit systems. And this would, the pilot program would connect Sunstar, Animal Control, and PCR to the public safety complex and the jail. The goal of this is to reduce the expense of third-party communication conduits that we're contracting. The department estimates savings for canceling one contract at about $50,000 a year. The second decision package is for landscape services. This is for three FTE. Currently, the services are being provided via temporary, I don't use that term loosely, contracted positions, but this is an ongoing need. We've had them in place for quite a while. Those particular services that are being performed include mowing, right-of-way vegetation clearance, litter collection, shrub maintenance. The increase to, the recurring increase to the county, which is Transportation Trust Fund dollars, is $66,580 for these three FTEs to be created. The third decision package is a helicopter for the mosquito control. This is estimated to be a...
It's a replacement.
Yeah, yes, a replacement helicopter. It's estimated this time to be $4 million. We are looking at many options for that. The, the need is to replace one of the helicopters that's not been used. It's a 1972 Bell helicopter, was formerly used. We had two helicopters used for mosquito control until about a year ago. But the second one that's still functional is ending, is getting close to the end of its useful life. What actually happens if we get the, this new helicopter or even a used helicopter is we can continue to maintain the program in-house, but we are looking at options for contracting or possibly leasing a helicopter. So we're trying to look at everything. This is estimated to be the most expensive option, so that's why we're bringing forward this dollar amount for now. It could be less if we choose another option.
Oh, no.
Should move along.
Yeah, it's probably better that you move along.
We could, we could do that for a while.
Yeah. Figure there's a couple helicopters that somebody else has that we could lease.
Yeah, we would definitely move on.
From time to time. Hope he wasn't listening.
Okay, so on to the fourth one. This is a PFAS risk assessment tool. I'm not going to pretend to know how to pronounce that, so if you need that pronounced, I'm going to refer to Kelly on that. But the, this is a non-recurring cost of $100,000. It's a, the goal is to produce a GIS-based tool that will be a proactive approach to address the challenges from PFAS contamination on county property.
Just Kelly, do we, do we sense any problem areas on that? And do you, are you, are you guys suspect, suspecting any problem areas with that?
Yeah, we know we do have problem areas. As a matter of fact, the, the state has done test sites around the, around the state, including Pinellas County, and has, has found this type of contamination. The concept here was to, you know, one, get, kind of get ahead of, of the obligations that are to remedy this, the PFAS. And obviously, you probably have heard from this from Megan and others. It's, you know, you've heard about firefighting foam, but it also is very prevalent in used, in old carpet and other things that are disposed of, and it ends up in the groundwater. So we, as part of the Brownfields program and, you know, trying to ensure that we are properly, you know, understanding the extent of contamination on properties that we own and any mitigation that we might need to do. This was brought forth as an option to evaluate that.
Okay, thank you.
The final decision package is very similar to the second one I discussed with the Landscape Services. This is for vegetation management. This, this area is also using long-term temporary employees to try to achieve some of its goals. They would like to convert those contract attempts to, to county FTE. The net increase of that recurring would be $48,650 annually. And obviously, those would increase with inflation. The, the current services provided by this team is open conveyance maintenance on the trail. We previously used inmates for this purpose, but in 2019, ceased that program out of concerns for too much interaction between the inmates and the public. And Shane, there are no questions with that, and we'll move on to the risk assessments.
Thank you. You will find the potential threats and risks on page 12. Going to start off with Florida Senate Bill 60, which is more commonly referred to as the Anonymous Complaints Bill. This bill was sponsored by State Senator Jennifer Bradley from Fleming Island, and it did pass the Florida 2021 Legislative Session. It is in the hands of Governor DeSantis, but as of this morning, there is no news as to whether it will be signed or vetoed. This bill initially posed a very serious threat to Public Works' ability to respond to anonymous complaints. However, much of the edge and the blanket ban on anonymous complaints was beaten down during the committee process. And what we were left with is language in the bill that states, "If there is a threat of imminent destruction of natural resources or to health, welfare, and safety, these complaints can still be made anonymously." Anonymous complaints account for about 70% of the volume across Environmental Management, across the Environmental Management Division, and the impact could have been severe. However, we do not anticipate it to be as, as severe with the current language. Beach nourishment, the lack of necessary property rates or easements along the beach could result in the loss or even, or in the reduction or even the loss of federal funding and federal authorization altogether. The county's responsibility might potentially be 100% of the project's cost and full project management. The county is working with the Army Corps of Engineers to reconsider the easement policy. However, as noted in the document, there is no guarantee that this effort will be successful.
And Kelly, on that one, were we not supposed to hear something by like late spring or, on kind of what their, what their position? Or maybe we did, and you, and I've forgotten about it.
They, they respond, there was a response back to Congressman Crist from an interim Assistant Secretary of the Army of Civil Works. After speaking with Harry Glenn, he advised that it's, we probably would not receive a response from the Army Corps until a new individual was appointed into that Assistant Secretary position. I do know that there has been a nomination. I'm not sure if that individual has, has been, you know, has, has gone completely through the nomination process and is now in that position yet. We did receive some interim communication from our project manager that they had submitted their feedback up to headquarters, but they really weren't sure when we would have a formal response.
Thank you.
Finally, under threats, since we already covered the sidewalk, we'll, we'll skip over that. But the annual voter registration fee allocation provided to Florida counties has been reduced by one-third over previous year allocations. The state has used that one-third of funding reduction to supplement a derelict vessel removal grant program fund. Pinellas Water and Navigation Unit will be, will now have to submit grant requests. And, and this is, this is going to cause a risk, excuse me, the risk is that once the annual state grant fund is used up, that we will no longer have access to those funds and we will have to take on those costs, which actually is already currently happening from the general fund. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Abigail, who is going to present to you the Transportation and Trust Fund.
So I think we're going to go ahead and move on to the Transportation Trust Fund presentation, and we do have a slideshow.
Well, okay, I think this, I would like for everybody to be here, so, can we just... So how's your first five months on the job or six months on the job going? We did this the other day with a new employee, just give us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, well, I moved down here...
Okay. Well, I moved down here in the middle of COVID from Atlanta, and it's been a pleasure working at the Office of Management and Budget, and the leadership there is astounding, and the leadership in Pinellas County is astounding, and I'm very pleased to live here now.
Well, welcome. Very nice. And what, what were you doing, where were you in Atlanta? Where were you working, who were you working for, or school, or what was the-
So I came from the University System of Georgia, the Board of Regents.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
That was awfully quick recap. I mean, a little bit, you know, kidding.
That's all I've ever done.
What's that? I know. I get it. I was just trying to give him a minute, but we're going to have to move on, I think, so let's go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Abigail.
All right. Great. So some of this information, much of this information, you received in a previous work session last month, but we're going to provide a little bit more detail and at the end, a staff recommendation on how to address the funding gap and improve areas of service in some key programs. So this first slide is a current forecast for the Transportation Trust Fund based on the FY22 Public Works budget request that we just reviewed, and this is if no action is taken. And you may notice that the, the gap between expenditures, the orange line at $38.1 million, and revenues, the gray line, at $28.3 million. This is a $10 million gap annually between revenues and expenditures that has contributed to the declining fund balance. This fund balance is expected to be exhausted in FY22 with a deficit of $3.3 million by year-end, and this will, this deficit will continue to grow through FY27 and onward. This forecast includes no new initiatives and reflects a maintaining of current levels of service. I'm going to let Kelly talk a little bit more about the current levels of service in some program areas funded by this fund. We're going to go to the next slide.
Thank you, Abigail. So, you know, there are three service areas listed here, but I did want to mention that the Transportation Trust does support a variety of services, including bridge operations and maintenance, pavement repairs, including that, you know, discussion about potholes. the sidewalk program and that our current level of service is low. We rated it a D. Generally, our repair and replacement backlog is significant and increases each year. There are additional details on a proposed sidewalk effort a little later in the presentation, so I won't go into that any further at this moment. Our mowing program is, is currently at a level of Service C, and I understand that, you know, this does tend to be more of an issue in the rainy season, especially from an aesthetic perspective. We get a lot of complaints, and, and along our roadway swales where higher grass can impact water flow. As we discussed previously, you know, Pasco and Hillsborough, we're trying to look at, you know, finding those apples-to-apples comparison. It can be difficult just given our urban nature, but Pasco and Hillsborough and their more urban areas and along major corridors, they, they complete between 26 and 28 cycles in those areas, those high-visibility areas, and about seven to nine flat right-of-way mowing cycles in their rural, rural road network. And of course, we don't really have a comparable rural community, so it's, it's hard to completely assess that, you know, apples-to-apples with, with our partners over there. Our evaluation, you know, that we completed would put a level of Service B at around 18 cycles and a level of Service A at 24 cycles. So just for comparison. Urban forestry trims trees within rights of ways, including branches that overhang roadways, sidewalks, and trails. Of course, heard during the parks discussion this morning, we also have a crew that supports the Parks Department and their, and their needs. You know, so while just maintaining the tree system and the urban forest within our rights of ways is an ongoing challenge, we, we have trash haulers and delivery companies that we have to keep those trees elevated over the roads. As school starts up, this is a really big deal with the school board and making sure that the buses can get through their routes in a safe way without knocking off their GPS transponders that are on top of the roofs. So we've been working with them for a number of years to make sure that we accomplish that as best we can. We do our best to plan, but our trimming cycle averages 15 years. Then, when trees are removed, you know, due to a structural issue or age, disease, we do our best to try to replace that somewhere within the surrounding community. We achieve that about 40% of the time. Obviously, the community very much supports that we do this. Trees have great stormwater benefits. They, they, obviously, I mean, when I got here today, the first thing I did was try to find a parking space where there was shade. So there's a lot of benefits to that, and, and it does extend the life of pavement. So having that shade does make our asphalt last longer. Tree trimming level of service is based on industry recommendations for maximizing tree health and return on investment. So a level of Service B is about a 10-year cycle and a one-to-one replacement at 70%. A level of Service A is around a five-year cycle and a one-to-one replacement at 100%. So just for comparison. We, we have been trying to evaluate ourselves compared to our municipal partners in the county. However, it's been a little challenging because a lot of our cities have very formal landscape programs and their medians and things where in the unincorporated areas, we don't have a lot of that. So it's, it's been difficult. Many of them have like annual programs in those medians and, you know, city, cityscape areas, if you will, and then more reactive in the community areas. One difference that we did find that was significantly different from us was Tarpon Springs that actually has adjacent property owners are required to maintain trees in the right-of-way and are required to replace one-on-one if they need to be removed. But we are also compiling data from Hillsborough and Pasco as well.
I'm going to turn the next slide over to Abigail. All right. All right. So why do we need additional funding? So we mentioned earlier the ongoing gap between revenues and expenditures of $10 million annually. Revenue growth is historically stagnant in this fund source because it's indexed to gallons purchased rather than prices of gasoline. For example, if a consumer purchases one gallon of gas at $2.49, the Transportation Trust Fund receives $0.07 in local option fuel tax. If two years later, a consumer purchases one gallon of gas at $3.75, the Transportation Trust Fund still only receives $0.07 in local option fuel tax. This fund only grows when there is a higher demand for gas, not when gas prices increase. Rather, the fund is facing greater fuel efficiency in electric vehicles, which are actually lowering consumer gasoline demand. And these issues have only been further aggravated by the decline in commuting during COVID-19. The service levels for programs funded by the trust are not meeting expectations, and additional revenue is not available for increasing those levels of service. Examples of program areas that aren't meeting service-level expectations include sidewalk repair and replacement backlog and mowing frequencies. Revenues for this fund source are split 60% for Pinellas County, 40% for municipalities, and we also know that cities are experiencing these same funding challenges. So we wanted to give a little bit of a history of the Transportation Trust Fund. So it began in 1985 with the introduction of the local option fuel tax at $0.04, and then two years later, it was expanded to the $0.06. And then in 1991, we amended the interlocal to a 75%, 25% distribution. Prior to this, it was based on a formula distribution outlined in state statute. In 2005, we adjusted that distribution to the 60%, 40% split that we are currently at today. In 2006, you might remember that we adopted the $0.09 local option fuel tax expansion, and this is revenue that we collect specifically for the ATMS-ITS initiative. In 2013, we implemented the unincorporated surface water assessment fee. When we implemented the surface water assessment fee, we were able to alleviate around $5.4 million of recurring expenses on the Transportation Trust Fund. And prior to this time, we had actually expected the Transportation Trust Fund to hit its first deficit in 2015. So adding this assessment fee allowed us to push out that deficit to where we are now, which is around 2020. So in FY20, that was the first year that we showed a likely deficit for expected 22. And then here we are today. We've experienced COVID-19. We've revised those projections, and we're still showing an expected deficit in fiscal year 22. So we've examined several scenarios for how to adjust and address this projected deficit. We've looked at decreasing expenditures to match revenues, but this would require large-scale and ongoing impacts to levels of service, specifically in maintenance and operations, where our levels of service are already struggling to meet demands. We've also examined doing a general fund transfer to temporarily subsidize this fund, and we're also examining expanding the local option fuel tax by the allowed $0.05 per gallon. State statute requires revenue from expanding LOFT to be used specifically for capital-related initiatives, and this is more restrictive than the 1-6 cent LOFT that's currently levied. And because of these restricted uses, additional revenue from LOFT expansion would not fully cover the gap or help in addressing fledgling levels of service in maintenance and operating areas. So this option alone will still require ongoing service-level reductions. However, we would have additional revenue to address sidewalk resurfacing and capital-related So we wanted to look at where we are with our peers in levying gasoline taxes. There's 36 counties, including Pasco, Manatee, and Sarasota, that are currently imposing the full $0.12. Hillsborough currently imposes $0.07, which is where we are in Pinellas currently. And we also wanted to point out that gasoline taxes supporting transportation resources function as a user fee. So this revenue that we collect comes from residents, non-residents, and tourists who purchase gasoline in our county and use our infrastructure. If we were to implement a general fund subsidy to close this funding gap, we would be imposing a tax on property owners or residents in order to deliver services to all users of our transportation infrastructure. And additionally, we wanted to note that using Federal Highway Administration mileage data, Ford Pinellas estimated the additional cost to the consumer of the $0.05 per gallon if we were to expand LOFT would be $27 annually. So here we have a, provided a staff recommendation that's multifaceted to address both the funding gap and problem areas for service delivery. We're recommending expanding the local option fuel tax by $0.05 per gallon using the same distribution split we currently utilize for LOFT, and this is the 60% and 40%. This will generate an estimated additional $54 million over the next five years that would be used for capital-related transportation needs. Additionally, we recommend temporarily incorporating other funding resources to prolong the fund's deficit, including a one-time $4 million general fund subsidy specifically to address sidewalk backlog, allowing us to raise our sidewalk service levels. We'll also be incorporating over the next few years, expected funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, which will account for lost revenue during the COVID period. And we're also recommending a repayment of $6.25 million in funds from Capital Projects Funds, which were transferred in FY19 from the Transportation Trust Fund for resurfacing projects, the Park Boulevard Bridge, and the Bel Air Complete Streets Design. You also might be aware that the $0.09 is set to expire in FY27, and we recommend renewal for the continuation of this revenue source. Kelly's going to go into greater detail on how we'd raise sidewalk service levels.
All right. Thank you, Abigail. So I'm going to walk through various service levels and what could be accomplished at those, at those various levels. So currently, at a level of Service D, our backlog is significant and grows at a rate of 10% annually. Our demand rate for replacement of damaged panels is eight miles a year, and we currently achieve 3.5 miles with available resources, and that does include contractual services as well as in-house staff. The cost of that program is $3.1 million. Looking at level of Service C, you know, we would be able to clear, you know, the existing backlog in 24 months with contractual services, but the backlog would continue to grow. There wouldn't be a backstop. So, and our replacement rate would improve to 5.4 miles. However, the program would be still entirely reactive. The level of Service B, which is the staff recommendation, also provides for completing the backlog in 24 months through contractual services. It also includes a greatly improved replacement rate of 6.3 miles annually, and in this scenario, resources can manage the backlog and perform some proactive cycles. The total cost of this effort is $4.77 million, which includes the $4 million subsidy to address the backlog, as well as funding for additional staff and equipment. And then a level of Service A kind of mirrors level of Service B. However, the annual eight-mile replacement rate would be fully achieved, and routine cycles would be part of that In addition to improving the sidewalk program, additional funding from the 1-5 local option fuel tax could be used to supplement the resurfacing program, and that is the first, the top chart there, and the additional miles that we could accomplish. However, we also, when we're doing the resurfacing program, we, we look around the area, and typically, if sidewalks are not ADA compliant, we want to do those upgrades at the same time we're doing the resurfacing. So we could roll in ADA compliance improvements within the resurfacing, as we currently do, and accomplish those at the same time. The number of miles resurfaced is slightly lower, but it's, it is a good effort to make sure that, that our crossings on our streets are safe for everyone.
So the following forecast shows the next five years for the Transportation Trust Fund if we incorporate all the changes we proposed in the staff recommendation. So this recommendation stabilizes the fund until fiscal year '26, and it has no significant reductions in service, while it also delivers increased levels of sidewalk service and additional resurfacing project completions.
So this, Commissioners, this gives us a little time to kind of see what happens at a state and federal level. As we see the onslaught of electric vehicles, whether there be a change in the way we fund transportation, there's too many unknowns to really project out at that point. This just gives us time to see some of those discussions play out and, and be able to better align our, our resources with, without looking too further, too much further out. We've been talking with cities and asking for the interlocal agreements. Probably the number one thing that I've heard is, what about electric vehicles? Where are we going with that? What's the impact of that? And there's just too much unknown there. But this gives us time for some of those higher-level conversations to occur and, until we're able to properly address it.
Question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where are we with the interlocal agreements as far as the cities?
We're moving well. We haven't, do you recall, Della or Kelly, when St. Petersburg's going to be on? It's either, it was either on this week or next week.
St. Petersburg is this week, and I believe we just got Largo.
We just have Largo.
Just came in.
And it was on for a consent at Clearwater.
Tomorrow.
On the consent agenda tomorrow. So we've gotten Safety Harbor. We've gotten Oldsmar. I think, you know, a lot of them, because of the timing of putting item on the agenda, it's either occurring this week or next week.
Okay. We did get the one letter from the one mayor, so I was just curious where that was.
We're, we're in good shape. And I think just the, the last piece is what you already know, which is the timeline for implementation. And we'll, we'll bring this back to you. So this will be incorporated with our overall budget recommendation. This will be very closely tied with the overall budget recommendation, because this will tie to us some other recommendations we make regarding, for instance, our property tax rate and other things. So this is the kind of the staff recommendation to address this particular issue. However, it will be rolled in as part of a larger budget presentation.
Just a clarification. I'm looking at the revised forecast recommendation, which you showed on one of the last slides, and that does not include the additional funding that you're recommending for sidewalk service level B, for instance, because that's just coming to us. That's our sidewalk program. Or does that go into the fund and that's split 60/40?
Oh, no, it won't be split 60/40. We're just talking about our portion of the, of the funding piece.
So the revised recommendation here on the revenues does not include that, those pieces?
This will manage our roads and our sidewalks that we're responsible for. The piece that goes to the city under that tax has nothing to do with this. However-
This is our fund.
This is our fund. And as you can see, this also, though, requires one-time general fund support to get caught up on that backlog. And so that'll be, again, part of our overall budget recommendation.
And I'd like to, maybe we could, for the second, our meeting coming up in June, talk about, and I know where we are a little bit, you shared with me a little bit where we are on the penny, and it's a capital source that can be used for different things, but you say we're short there overall based on demands, but I'd like to just- But I'd like to just be able to think along an alternative source of funds that people have voted to get taxed on for the kinds of things that we're asking for for this fund. And and again, nothing comes at a good time, right? So we're trying to during, coming out of these, these, this, this bad year and a half and where people are and rising gas prices, this becomes just another piece that, you know, again, we're going to try to tell people what it's all, our residents, what it's all about and why we're doing it. But it is a critical, it's a critical change at a tough time. So again, we have a whole list of priorities in our, in our, in our.
We do. And actually, the the penny plan, our capital plan, will be part of our budget presentations.
When's that coming?
Bill? Cecilia?
I believe it's June 16th.
Okay. So the next cycle of.
The next cycle of these meetings will be the general fund, which also include penny.
So that'll be kind of a piece of the overall conversation.
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Yes, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we also get if we have, I don't know if we keep track of it anywhere, but what, and I've seen various news articles, but what the price of gas in Pinellas County is? I mean, do we know that? Do we know what it is today? Do we know what it was a year ago? Do we know what it was, the average cost per gallon?
Without taxes, you mean?
Yeah, just, well, no, the, when I go to the pump and it's $2.49 today, and it's in 2014, it was 3.05, and 20, do we have any idea? Do we keep track of that anywhere?
I don't know that we could keep track of it. I mean, I don't know that we keep track of it. We certainly could get that information.
Yeah, we don't track that typically, but it's readily available information. And as we all know, as consumers, it yo-yos up and down.
Right. And I think, but I think that would be helpful in the conversation, because I think there's a narrative being created that, you know, it's so much higher today than it was.
Two years ago.
Four months ago, or something like that. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
We can certainly provide that. I mean, as you know, and there's so many things that impact gas prices. Two years ago, it was over $3.20 a gallon, for instance. I was reading an article on that. I mean, it, it, it does fluctuate, and that's, there's never a good time to be looking at a gas.
Shorter and, yeah, shorter memories and longer memories vary depending on whether prices are going up or going down. So it does make a difference. Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you very much. Really good discussion. And Barry, you and staff may already be looking at this, but also, we want to take a look at how PSTA and T-Bart are really trying to push persons to utilize other means of transportation versus driving, not just electric cars. So that'll probably also weigh on the intended revenue source if we're pushing people to utilize public transportation versus.
There's certainly, I mean, that's a bigger conversation, obviously, with them creating options and for people. There's certainly a push. That's the reason we're seeing, I think, in some ways, you know, lower, people are trying to move closer and have other options rather than vehicles.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah. Excuse me.
I would agree with that.
Yes, I just wanted to say, in reference to Commissioner Justice's comments, I know I paid $2.87 when I filled my tank up yesterday, and it has fluctuated dramatically. A lot of it was the cause of the cyber attack, which happened in the pipeline, which, by the way, had nothing to do with the state of Florida, even though there was an executive action to address it, which caused something of a panic with some folks. But that pipeline was never going to affect us, because all of our gases comes in over the port of Tampa Bay. So, you know, we need to keep those things in mind as well. We all buy gas to get back and forth to these meetings, as an example, except for one of us.
So just a, just a quick question. The price, you made a comment, I think, Abigail, about we're getting, the prices are based on how much we consume, not the elevating prices. That's different than indexing.
Correct.
Gas prices, right? Like, the state of Florida indexes theirs, the federal government does not, and we do not. Is that?
The local option fuel tax that we're considering expanding is not indexed to the gasoline price. So regardless of what gasoline prices per gallon, we would receive the same number of cents per gallon.
Yeah. Okay. And so with that, with that issue in mind, with less driving in the last year, with more and more.
Fuel-efficient vehicles.
Electric vehicles coming into play, not addressing some of those things really is at the heart of the problems that we have. So instead of fixing the problems that we have, we just going to tax more. And that, and again, I know some things are in our control and some things aren't in our control. But it's very frustrating for residents seeing that picture.
And I understand that. I actually addressed this at a city council meeting the other night. We had that exact question. And, you know, the answer, you know, obviously, there's no good answer anytime you're asking for more revenue under one particular source. But, you know, in this particular case, when we're talking about infrastructure, we're not, we're not talking about, you know, adding staff, we're not talking about general government. We're talking about something that we use every day with our infrastructure and maintaining that, you know, there was broad support for that. And they were especially happy to know that it cannot by law be used for anything else. It has to be used for capital only. And so, you know, when, when you explain it that way, and then you can also look at the choices. We could, you know, adjust our rate when we're going to look at our general property tax rate. When we're, when we're saying, should we do this? Where 40% of that is coming from visitors who come here from out of county or out of state or wherever and use our roads, and they're helping to pay for that versus a property tax. When those are the choices, it's an easy choice. But nobody, including myself, wants to sit here and propose this, but we have to address this infrastructure.
Any other, any other, yes?
I do think that we will have transportation infrastructure dollars coming from the feds here shortly that should help in some manner, shape, or form, wouldn't they? Because this, at the end of the day, I'm there, what I worry most about is this is really a Band-Aid to get us through.
It gives us, it gives us time. This will also allow for matching dollars, okay? So, you know, anytime you have federal dollars, they're not free. And so, you know, I think as this will give us time to see how, how these federal programs play out, which we know will be a year or two, even if they pass it tomorrow. So we really address a critical need. We alleviate a backlog that we've been discussing for some time, and it puts us in a position to be able to look at these other larger issues in context for future decisions.
Yes.
And if I could add, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Peters.
I just wanted to add, as far as the infrastructure bill, that that infrastructure bill is non-recurring. Just as a reminder, the issue that we have at hand right now is a $10 million per year recurring issue. So while we will potentially, if the, if the infrastructure bill does pass, have an opportunity to be able to draw down some of those funds to address some of our infrastructure needs, that will not resolve a $10 million gap on a year-over-year basis.
But what does that mean, Bill? Excuse me, Mr. Chair. What does that mean when you say yearly? Is that forever?
As long as our current, and thank you, Abigail, for going back to the initial slide, as long as we continue with the service levels we have today, which we've talked about the issues associated with those service levels, and we continue to have the current revenue stream available to us, that, yes, that does continue forever.
But those dollars would likely impact a penny for Pinellas, large capital infrastructure projects, more so than the maintenance of our sidewalks, our drainage ways, pothole repair. So that's, that's his point. Those are big, large capital projects. That's likely what the federal funding sources would go for.
But these are considered, at least I've heard the term used this morning, capital projects.
Correct.
Even though there, there's recurring list of capital projects, it is capital projects nonetheless.
Right, as an example.
Each one individual, when added together over, over subsequent years, becomes recurring, but they're different projects every year.
Yes, just like every, every individual sidewalk that's repaired.
Right.
Is a different sidewalk segment.
So.
Those sidewalk segments, when they are replaced, which is a majority of the work that's done, I think it's 90%, if I remember correctly, 90% of the sidewalk repairs that are done are actually replacements, those are considered to be capital in nature. So that's what this one to five cent can be used for.
I understand. I mean, I was, I was really talking to your comment about recurring versus on the, on the, on the other fund source and Commissioner Peters.
Thank you. And this is kind of a different subject, but on that subject, I just, you know, after the year we've had, although Florida's done better than other states, after the year we've had, I've got lots of concerns about raising taxes and fees, just like our chair has stated. You know, you raised that. Let's say that's $200 to me, but if I have a spouse, then it's $200 to my spouse. And if I have two teenage kids, and it's $200 for each one of them, so it's $800 to a household.
It's actually $27 per household, per car.
Per car?
Per car.
Okay. Because that's not the numbers that I'm, I was hearing, so.
No, it's, it's, we've calculated, it's $27 per car.
And it's monthly, yearly?
Annually.
Annually. Hmm. Okay. Well, and that's, that's another subject. But, you know, I'm listening to this presentation now, it's gone way till the last one was done. But last year, I think it was last year, I kind of talked about, and it's kind of overwhelming hearing everybody and how much more they want, how much more they need. I get it. I like hearing what we need and what the projections are, but I also like to hear, you know, what if, what if, what if what happened last, we projected was going to happen, which didn't happen, but that we were going to have a deficit, and we might have to look at other solutions and creative solutions and maybe cutbacks. And, and I like it, when I was in the legislature, there was always a presentation on, on what we need, what the needs are, just like we're getting here, but we also had, what would we do if we had to take a 3% or a 5% loss? And I don't know if you're planning on doing that later, but I know we had talked about this either last year or the year before. And I think every time we have one of these presentations, we look at this, but then we also look at creative ways in which we can get by without, and I hope that you're going to present those at some point.
So we have six days of departments talking about their wants and needs. My presentation will be on needs only and on potential reductions. Obviously, last year, we cut for the departments report to the Board of Commissioners, we cut their, their expenses, how much they spend by 8%. So, so we took, we, we already looked at that, and we took a hard, hard look at that as part of last year's budget. We did the full extension, as you know. We did the full extension, but we put that into reserves. Part of those reserves are going to be spelled out. That's how we're going to get rid of this backlog in sidewalks.
Okay.
And so that'll all be part of that presentation in July.
I want to clarify. So you're going to give it to us just in one lump sum? And what I'm saying is, if, if Kelly were to give us that, this group, they were to give us what they want, and then they would say, this is where we're going to take it from, rather than you on the big, big, big picture, we know exactly in the department, exactly what's going to happen in, within each department. And I, I like that concept, and, and I thought maybe I was clear last year that this, I get what you're doing, that you do it in your big one, but when you do it in the great big one, you really just can't get to the, to the meat on the bone about which department and what's going to happen in every single department. And so, you know, if you're not going to do it this year, and next year, each department, if they would do that and let us know specifically, then I know what bones being picked at, very specifically within that department, whether I'm okay with that or not, versus in the big overall picture, just kind of the general, we're going to, this is the reduction, but we don't know when the rubber hits the road, what it really means.
Yeah.
So I like it within the department where, you know, Kelly can make it very clear, they can make it very clear, you know, that the sidewalks are going to get so much different, and, but this is our solution to our problems, our wants and our needs, and if we need a 3% cut, this is what we do. And, you know, we've done that in my, in my city, and we did that in the legislature, and you do it within the department, and you know exactly where the, where the ax went, you know, you know what limb got cut.
In this particular case, we did that. One of our service level options is that we continue status quo. And then that, that also created a backlog and a lower service level.
Right. But, but I like the idea that if I had to take a 3% cut, this is what it's going to look like, or we can do creative solutions. I mean, I, I, I enjoy it when I've had that done in the past. When an ax comes out and something's getting cut, I know very specifically where it's getting cut, whether I can live with it or not. And I just like that, I could have waited to the end of this today, and I'm sorry I didn't, but, but I do like that. I like when we know exactly where it's cut versus a big overall. We're just going to take some money away from administration, but we don't know what it means. When the rubber hits the road, what does that really mean? So it's just my comment, it's, you know, just, just my thought on that. But it really makes a difference when we know exactly what's being, when the rubber hits the road, what it means, per department. Thank you.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Gerard.
Well, just in response to that, I think that assumes that everybody, that every department is adequately funded right now. You know, that everybody could take certain cuts without harming the overall a whole lot. And I don't think that's true. So, and as we heard when we were talking about the Parks Department, they've been in a deficit since 2007. Yeah, 2007, or not a deficit, but they cut back and never came back, you know, 14 years ago. So, and there are other things that we pretty much have to do that we, that we can't cut. So I guess, I think that's kind of an impractical way to do things, and I trust that you're going to come back with ways that were saving money, i.e., cutting 8% of expenses across the board, you know, in a year is a lot, by the way. That's all.
I'm glad we're all together, you know, and we've, we've got some refinement to do, but I'm really proud of the team as they're trying to come together to show you the performance metrics with the budget. Why? Because the Performance Metrics Unit is designed to help give us fresh set of eyes to department operations and try to find deficiencies ongoing throughout the year, every year. And so as we, as we combine those two efforts, hopefully, we'll, we'll get our presentation where we can follow on the slides and things, but, but you can actually see kind of that rubber meet the road, and, and they can outline what they've done to create and drive efficiencies within, both from the department-driven and then from performance group, both, that will contribute to that budget presentation that, that you're seeing. So that's the, that's the goal. We'll continue to work and refine that, but.
Yeah. And I think, again, you put it in perspective this morning. What today is all about is trying to give us a sense of what the departments, all of their work has yielded to date, and get some feedback, and then go back and do some more figuring that might be a little different than what it is today. So Commissioner Long?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I'm the final person on this particular piece, but before we come back with it, I would like to know if Jewel has a number, because I heard her speak at the, at the, our last meeting, and talked about the amount of money that we are spending on liability, on the issues of our sidewalks, and people filing litigation against us, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm curious how much that adds up to over a year's time, and if you added four or five years into that, what that might look like. I think that would be important information for us to have as well, as we consider that ugly word liabilities, because it is something that we have to weigh as we're making decisions, right? I think.
I agree. I think that's, I think it's one of the major drivers for me. Commissioner Seal?
Yes, thank you.
No, they've been telling me she wants to speak, so, yeah.
Yes, I had my hand up. A couple things. One, Barry referenced the electrical vehicle. Is there any current path that we can charge a license fee or anything else legally through the state of Florida?
Not at the local level, and that's the reason it's part of a bigger conversation. That would have to really be adjusted at the state level and at the national level where these gas tax dollars are collected.
But there's no other method that we can charge a youth or fee of some type?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I will look into that further, but from, from our, our discussions, we currently do that, not have that statutory authority. But, you know, and Commissioner Seal, this has been discussed at a national level for years, you know, and unfortunately, you know, it takes a long time to change a, a large structure like that. But, you know, the way in which we fund infrastructure is a major, major issue, and it really does need to change. I'm just not sure. I don't think we have the local authority, and, but I'm hopeful that at the state and national level that they could address this.
Well, not to go down another whole path. Well, not to go down another whole path, but we do not charge, I believe, either municipal taxes or franchise fees on any of the Duke Energy Bills, and haven't. We're one of the few governments that does not. All the cities charge municipal plus franchise fees on their energy bills. Again, I'm not suggesting that, but it might be another path for putting some kind of small charge for electric vehicles. I don't know. Just.
I see Cecilia taking notes there. So I saw her writing something we can look into, but Bill has something.
Okay. And then the other question I had was on the attachment that does the pro forma. I believe it was Attachment Six. So it appears that based on the pro forma, even with implementing the additional gas tax, that by year fiscal '26 to '27, we'll be in a deficit again?
That's correct.
So this is only a stopgap measure?
It is a stopgap measure. But again, that's the reason, that's the full value of the statutory authority that we have.
And I guess I'm puzzled by the transfers to Penny resurfacing, which starts in fiscal year '22?
I can answer that. So the transfers to Penny for resurfacing. So if we were to expand the local auction fuel tax for the five cents, that is a restricted revenue source. Like we were discussing, it has to be used for capital initiatives. And so we would use it for as much capital initiatives as we could. But anything that we would have left, we'd be able to put towards Penny for resurfacing projects.
We're going to, and so this is just transferring it over to use as part of the resurfacing program. We're going to talk about the penny come the 16th. The penny is revenue constrained also significantly, significantly. And so we'll outline all those projects and what their requests are, what the needs are, and what the, how much the fund generates.
And I'm sorry, when is that planned?
That'll be for June 16th, I believe. Is that right, Bill?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I heard earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Flowers, did you have anything? Okay. And Barry, just real quick, on the gas tax that we're talking, that you're, that you all proposing, or recommending, is that, can that be done a year at a time, or do you have to do five years at a time? How do you, what's the rule on that?
Bill, is that a 10-year cycle? Is that correct? Has to be revisited?
We have thus far done 10-year cycles for the one to six. But I believe, if I remember correctly, it's 20 years is the statutorily authorized maximum period.
I wasn't looking for the maximum. I was looking for.
Well, we took half, Commissioner.
What's the minimum?
I'm not aware of a minimum.
Okay. So we could, at least if you're not aware, but we could do a year at a time?
We could.
Okay. Just asking. I'm just asking. And then.
But could you modify it at any time during that, let's say you set it for a 10-year period? Could you modify it anytime during that 10-year period?
Based on the timing that's enumerated in statute regarding notifying DOR, yes, you could. So you could authorize it for 10, I think your point is, you could authorize it for 10 years, like we do for one through six. And that's if we get three years in, and there's a resolution to.
They changed the state formula. We could revisit it at that time.
And then you all, I'm sure, I'm sure that you all have figured out what it would take, what kind of, how much of that five cents would take to balance us out this year? Not balance us out, but to avoid the deficit.
Yes. One of the things that Abigail's been able to do is build a model that allows us to model out one, two, three, four, or five cents and see what it does to the forecast.
That's what I was, we don't need to get into that today. But, and then the final thing is, on the total 12 cents that you referenced, other communities have taken in. We're at seven. Are those, each of those pennies, are they treated differently as far as capital or maintenance?
Yes. Each penny has its statutory defined use for that section.
Fine. When you bring that back, could you give us that as well?
Sure.
You may be in here, but if you could just highlight that when we have that conversation.
We certainly can. The last is most restrictive in that you can only use it for capital.
The last, these five cents that you're talking about?
This five cents.
One, two, three, four, or five cent addition is all capital?
All capital.
Okay. And then the original six cents, is there's a combination of capital and maintenance?
Yes.
There's a table in your backup that shows the allowable uses. It looks like it's Attachment Eight.
Okay, I think you were, you just usurped what Abigail was going to say, but that's okay. So we have all that in there already, so, okay.
And just to summarize that, one through seven can be used for pretty much anything transportation-related. One through five, the one through five we're talking about that we're not currently imposing, that is what's restricted to capital.
And the one through seven really is the ninth cent.
It's the one through six plus the ninth.
Plus the ninth. Gotcha. Okay. Okay, that's all I had for now.
Great.
Anything else on this? We'll go on to solid waste?
Yep.
And Barry, I've got a doctor's appointment. I'm going to leave at three, so Commissioner Justice will take over.
Then we'll move on up to our next group. We tried to summarize the information, but as you can see, even with summarizing the information, six days can go pretty quick. We're just hitting the highlights and barely able to get through that. And the ready Cecilia, you go ahead.
While we're getting oriented and situated, just wanted to let you know that the document they'll be referencing is the first attachment on your Granicus item called FY22 SW Budget Analysis. And Linda Larkins is our budget analyst, our operating budget analyst for Solid Waste, and she'll be leading the discussion. And I believe she'll introduce the rest of the team.
Good afternoon. Thanks for allowing us to come and speak with you today. My name is Linda Larkins. As Cecilia said, I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. Here with me today are a couple of other folks from Office of Management and Budget. Jennifer Kastagner, Shane Kunse. Collectively, the three of us prepared the information that you have in front of you and is included in the Granicus item. And we'll be able to respond to any questions that you have regarding any of this information. We also have Paul Sacco, the Department Director for Solid Waste, who's here with us. And he's going to be contributing as needed and responding to any questions that we are not able to respond to because they may be technical or operational in nature. And as Cecilia mentioned, the document that we're going to be using primarily is the one that's titled FY22 Solid Waste Budget Analysis. At any point today, this afternoon, if you have any questions about any of the other attachments, one through six, we'll be happy to respond to those. And if we feel that we need to reference any of those, we'll do our very best to make sure we let you know which document it is and where we're referencing, so you can hopefully follow along. So the Solid Waste Department, as you may already know, provides solid waste services to all the citizens within Pinellas County. And we attempt to emphasize public awareness and communications that allow the citizens to make educated choices about what to do with their solid waste. And FY20 with COVID-19, the department did see some impacts. Few highlights here and the status so far. The administration building lobby needed to close to customers in March of 2020. It is still closed at this point in time. The department does expect to reopen that lobby in the near future based on direction from county administration. The department also needed to cancel site tours and educational speaking engagements. Those are close contact activities, and clearly it wasn't safe to continue those at that point in time. Again, they are working on a plan to resume those in the near future. And the third item that I wanted to share is business waste assessments. Those have seen some reductions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They expect that compliance rates will increase once those assessments are able to be resumed on a regular basis. And again, that plan is being prepared by the department and will be working with county administration on launching that. So the balance of the information in this particular document provides financial and FTE information on a by-program basis. So that's the reports that you may happen to see in front of you, and it's on a per-program basis. The two main programs for the Solid Waste Department are site operational programs and recycling and education programs. The recycling and education programs, as you might expect, includes all funds that are associated with providing education or outreach efforts. The Household Electronics and Chemical Collection Center, excuse me, or HEC III. They also do the mobile collections. They have small quantity generators in reef construction. And the site operational programs captures the bulk of the rest of the funds that the department uses. And it includes collection and disposal operations, the facilities, contracts, ensuring that we're in compliance with state and federal applications and regulations. So if you happen to be following along in that document, I am nearing the bottom of page three. The revenue for the recycling and education programs is decreasing by about $1.3 million. And normally, this program doesn't have revenue associated with it. In FY21, it does have this amount of revenue. It's a grant, a one-time grant from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And they're reimbursing the county for costs associated with construction of the North County HEC III facility. That's the one that's up on US Highway 19 in Clearwater, where the driving range is. And so since it's a one-time-only grant, that revenue will not be repeated in FY22. Excuse me. Expenditures for this program are decreasing by almost $1 million. About a third of that's coming from personal services. And the department has been embarking on a department-wide reorganization. It started about in February of this year, and I believe it's being phased in and anticipated to be completed around October, maybe November of this year. The result, one of the results of this reorganization is the elimination of two positions. And so that's why we're seeing about a $337,000 decrease in personal services related to this program. The operating expenses in this program are also decreasing, a little over $300,000. And the department is completing or nearing completion of a few non-recurring consulting studies, like the end market study, the recycling composition study. You may have heard the Utilities Department mention or discuss the Regional Resource Recovery Facility feasibility study. And there've also been some reductions resulting from the ability for the department to eliminate two mobile collection events per year. They're able to eliminate two events because of the opening of that North County HEC III facility. The remaining portion of the decrease in expenditures is CIP-related. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you, Linda. The proposed CIP in this program saw a decrease of $5.7 million from the current plan. This was due to the completion, as Linda mentioned, of the North County HEC facility project, and also the removal of the HEC III Satellite Site South project, due to the project no longer being a need. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Shane to discuss the performance measures.
Thank you, Jen. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. I probably should have started with this this morning, but I do want to bring to your attention that you also have attachments from my group, and that's the SPM team. Detachment one with solid waste, but you can also see the performance measures and work plans visualized there. You do have that for all of the departments. Don't mean to distract you from this conversation as we have it in the text, but I wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. You also have links to the page where you can view it online, as well as the staff report. So today, I am going to talk to you about a very important work plan initiative that Solid Waste is on track to complete in FY21. And that is the feasibility of a publicly-owned regional resource recovery facility. And this is still on page four of the document. This feasibility study is expected to be completed soon. And Solid Waste and the Technical Management Committee are expected to bring forth recommendations from that study on whether or not to move forward with this initiative here in the near future. This did come at a cost, the study did come to a cost to the county of $200,000. Pinellas County's recycling rate increased in calendar year '19. We currently do not have calendar year '20's data. We do expect to have that probably around July. But we did see an increase to 50.6% in calendar year '19. That puts us at 12th in the state for recycling. However, because we do have the waste-to-energy facility, and we are able to burn much of that trash, we do get what's called a combustion credit. So that actually increases our recycling rate, putting us at number two in the state of Florida, just behind Lee County. The department also completed a study on the contamination rate for recycling and found that we were 19% countywide. That means 19% of the recyclables that were sent to our single-stream material resource facility were contaminated and could not be recycled. This is actually much lower than what the University of Florida found, in the state average for contamination rate of 27%. We are going to continue doing studies annually to determine which direction our contamination rate is going. And of course, one of the best ways to combat an increasing rate is through community education. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Linda, and she is going to cover the site operational budget program.
Thank you, Shane. If you are following along, I'm going to pick up at the bottom of page four. So the revenue for the site operational programs is increasing about $6.5 million from FY21 to FY22. The main reason for this increase is the tipping fee increase. That 6.0% that, per ton tipping fee that the customers pay when they come through the scale house. This is the third of a three-year tipping fee increase that this Board of County Commissioners adopted back in March of 2019. So that will take the tipping fee from its current $42.15 a ton to $44.70 per ton effective October 1. Now, the tipping fees revenue is comprised of two components. One is the fee per ton that increases, and it's also a factor of the number of tons coming in through the scale house. And for FY22, at this point in time, we are expecting an increase of 1.5% to the FY21 budgeted tons. And collectively, those two components drive the total FY21 tipping fee revenues. Another portion of the tipping fees are the fees that we require folks to pay for whole tires. Whole tires are charged at quite a bit of a different rate than just the municipal solid waste per ton. Currently, it's $110 per ton. We are proposing that the board allow us to increase that to $125 per ton. That would be effective October 1, 2021. We've also got a radio frequency window sticker fee increase from $17 to $18. And that's just a pass-through of the costs that we incur when we have to purchase those window stickers. The expenditures for this program are decreasing almost $26 million. The operating expense portion of that is a mere $1.2 million. And that's primarily the result of some repair and maintenance projects that we have, are going to complete this year at the waste-to-energy facility. The remainder of the decrease is coming from CIP, and I will invite Jen to share with you that information.
Thank you, Linda. I'm on about the top of the page five. So the proposed CIP in this program saw a significant decrease of $41.3 million from the current plan, and that's for several reasons. The first one being, all the technical recovery plan projects are to be completed this fiscal year. Second, with the completion of the master plan, seven projects were removed due to no longer being a need. And also with that master plan completion, Solid Waste is proposing six new projects being built into the budget. Thank you. I'll turn it back to Linda.
Thank you. I'm at the bottom of page five at this point. Each year, the solid waste department hires a consultant to perform a study to project the remaining lifespan of the landfill, and it is currently at a remainder of 79 years. That's a decrease of three years since FY '19. And one of the main reasons for this decrease is that there've been an increase in the number of diversions. And a diversion, Paul can probably say this more eloquently than I can, but whenever the waste-to-energy facility has to do some significant maintenance or work on a particular part of the facility, we have to shut that portion of it down and therefore divert the trash over to the landfill. So the more work we're doing, the more diversions need to happen. So that's a result that of the three-year decrease in the remaining lifespan of the landfill. I will share that the department has embarked on a feasibility study to find a way to reuse ash and turn it into blocks that the blocks can then hopefully be able to create steeper side slopes, and that would in turn allow us to allow more space and increase the life of the landfill. And one other thing that I wanted to point out is that solid waste has a plan to cease recycling of electronics and instead begin to incinerate them by FY '23. And this would reduce third-party contract costs, about $300,000 a year. And it would remove the department's personal liability, personal information liability, and it would maximize the recovery of metals from those electronics. And at this point, I am in about the middle of page six. So far, we've just been talking about the the two main funds that comprise solid waste. There is a third fund in solid waste, and that's Lealman Solid Waste. So that department, or that that fund is what I'm going to share with you now. This fund and this program actually began in about 2007, and this fund provides for revenues and expenditures associated with providing franchise collection service to the Lealman Municipal Service Benefit Unit, or MSBU. And the residents are assessed via a non-ad valorem special assessment that's included on the property owner's tax bills. And this this fund generally only uses one primary program, and that's the site operational program. And fast-forwarding now to towards the bottom of page seven, we can see that the revenue associated with this site operational program in this fund is increasing by about $12,500. And that's based on our anticipation that there will be some additional customers that wish to join the Lealman Solid Waste MSBU. Generally, it's future mobile home parks. And so as they join, then the they would need to begin paying, and therefore, the revenue would increase. I do want to point out that for FY '22, we're not anticipating an increase in the collection fee for these folks. It's still $16 a month or $192 per year for each residential unit. Now, even though the revenue is only increasing by $12,500, the expenditures are increasing by a little over $70,000. And this is primarily due to the contract hauler costs. Their contract allows them to pass through CPI or Consumer Price Index increases, as well as fuel cost increases. And another item to point out is that as the tipping fee increases, those are costs incurred by the contract hauler, and then they pass them on to to us. And the reserves program is actually decreasing by almost $111,000. And what that's telling us is that this fund's reserves are being used to help offset or absorb the tipping fee increases, the contract hauler, fuel increases, and CPI increases. And we do, we use those reserves to help keep keep the costs as low as possible for the residents. A few opportunities for efficiencies that I want to share, and these these you may have already heard about last year or from various other reportings that Paul has provided. The department is working on an enhanced metals recovery pilot project, and that could be a potential additional revenue source. And renewable energy credits, that's another possible revenue source, and this is where the department would sell electricity that's generated by a waste-to-energy facility. And they'd sell it on the open market. There are some potential threats, and these, I think, are reruns of last year's, but they continue to be potential threats. The power purchase agreement, or PPA, still expires December 20, 24. That will be a significant loss of revenue for the funds, and it's looking like the most likely way that we'll be able to recover. That level of revenue would be through future rate and tipping fee increases. There's continued pressure on revenues and expenditures related to the recycled materials markets. And the municipal solid waste, we see it tends to be proportional to the economy. So as people are traveling here less frequently, or as residents feel a pinch in their wallets, they may be purchasing fewer items. Fewer items get sent to the landfill. Therefore, our tonnage decreases, which decreases our tipping fee revenue. And we also have a need to complete various activities and a project to increase the industrial water treatment plant process flow rate capacity, it's a mouthful, to avoid future potential fines or penalties that would come to us from FDEP. And now I invite Paul to share some additional information as he wishes.
Thank you, Linda. So I know I was here presenting, I don't know, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. It's just kind of built on what what Linda was was expressing. So going forward, you know, what's most important, or at least the highest-level projects that we're working on at solid waste really is the around recycling, the standardization of municipal contracts that we talked about, and also finalizing the materials recovery facility recommendation. And again, that feedback from from our discussion that we had here is being brought back to the TMC in May, and staff is continuing to formulate and finalize those pro forma costs associated with the MRF, and would be prepared to bring that back to the TMC in September, and then back to you all hopefully by the end of the calendar year. Our enterprise asset management program, I know that's probably been discussed many times today. We're in track two. Solid Waste is one of the departments in track two. We're the last department to go live, which is going to be in, I think, December, early December timeframe. Right now, we're probably the furthest behind in then using asset management. It's just the way it has been at solid waste for a long time. We do asset management, but nowhere near to the sophistication that some of the other departments have done over the years. So, you know, bad news in that we're probably lagging behind in the pack, but good news is that we don't have any bad habits to break. So we're going to be learning as a professional right out of the gate. We feel very strongly about where we are moving in with our programs that we've done, the processes that we reviewed, and the team that we have in place. They're very passionate. I'm very excited about getting deeper into that world. I come from that world previously, so I'm excited to kind of lead that effort as far as what we can do and achieve some really good things at solid waste. Linda talked about the enhanced metals project. So again, that works on a couple different fronts. First, the waste energy facility does have metals recovery, both ferrous and non-ferrous. Those markets certainly are sick, pull and move up and down. They're beginning to to move up again. The indicators are that it's going to be continued growth. And certainly, the non-ferrous, which are, you know, your your gold, silver, aluminum, you know, your expensive metals, are harder to extract because they don't come out with a magnet. You have to use a different process. But we're going to be working hard to do a better job with that because we know we're not extracting 100% of what's going in there. Not that we'd ever be at 100%, but we would be a lot closer than we are today. And those things aren't going to be buried in the backyard in the landfill. And then on this, you know, the second point, as Linda brought up, is when we when we move to the incineration of electronics, they're really the most important parts that you want to recycle out of the electronics. The rest are plastics and a little bit of glass, and really, glass is not even a major part or a player in some of the electronics that we're seeing today as we move through different TV technologies and your computers and things of that nature. But again, being able to recover those metals from that, typically, the electronics portion of our our waste stream is 70, 80,000 tons per year out of the close to a million tons that come through the facility. So not insignificant, but not a major player, and certainly something that we can take on easily in what we're trying to accomplish. And then the last up is to complete the clarifier tank, which is part of the industrial wastewater treatment facility. That is something that we've promised to FDEP in our consent order through our discharge permit that we would complete. That's scheduled to be completed by the fall of 2022. And we're, we have broken ground. We're actually doing the site work now. They're building up the the elevation of the the land, or I'm sorry, the fill that's going on out there, so we can kind of let that settle for four or five months to give us a good compaction and foundation for when they start to do the pours of the tank itself. So we remain on schedule, and we remain on budget with that project. But they're the five, really, the top five projects that really rise to the top that that we want to continue to achieve. You know, Shane's new coming onboard and supporting us, and I appreciate that. But just from a performance metric standpoint, you know, what I've kind of educated him a little bit, and really, our team, is the two major indicators that we really need to focus on is our landfill life and our recycling rate. Everything that we do really roll up into those two performance indicators. And, you know, this year, we're seeing a three-year reduction of the landfill, and I would expect we'll see a reduction next year with our landfill landfill life. And that's really because of the work that's being completed with our TRP at the landfill, or I'm sorry, at the waste-to-energy facility, and also some increased trash levels that we're seeing at site through COVID. Our levels have really shifted from commercial to residential and have really increased, and we weren't really expecting that large of an increase. But to give you an idea, I think in March, we typically will run on a high end, maybe 95,000 to 97,000 tons per month. We were at like 103,000 or 104,000. Our revenues are typically three to 3.5 million, 3.6 million. It was like 4.3 million. So while the revenues are great, it's killing our landfill life because we can't process all that trash through the waste-to-energy facility. So there's a lot of levers and whatnot that are connected. You know, you have the the trash that's coming in, the rates that we're paying, the capacity of the waste-to-energy facility, trying to keep our landfill, you know, life on an upward turn instead of a downward turn. And we're working on all those things. But until we finish the TRP projects at the waste-to-energy facility, when we're done with that, we will reduce the amount of time that facility's down for the outages, which would still be in September or springtime and fall. But we would hope over the year, we would be able to reduce the days that that facility's down by 12 to 14 days is the is the estimate that I'm being told. And, you know, we run probably through that facility anywhere between 2 to 2,000 to 2,600 tons per day. So 12 to 14 days is a big, big number for us when you're when you're talking about bumping up against your capacity numbers. So, you know, I want you to feel good that we have a good handle on where we're at, what our goals are. We don't take our eye off the prize as far as zero waste of landfill by 2050. All the new programs and projects that are in there that Jen mentioned, or Jennifer mentioned, I'm sorry, with the CIP come from the master plan that really point us in that direction. And this is really a year of planning for us to get all those things in place and then for us to take off in the next three to four years to get some of these major projects off the ground and running, so we could take some of the pressure off of the waste-to-energy facility through increased recycling or removing those things from our waste stream in total. And then the last point I'd like to make is just getting back to our education and outreach programs. It's getting those things out of the waste stream that are most important, and that's what we haven't been able to do with not getting out there and talking to those that are in the know or those that want to do better in recycling. We need to get out there and start doing that again. You know, it's kind of like removing your sales force when you're when your business is in trouble. You need the salespeople out on the ground even more so, and that's kind of our sales force. I mean, there are there are PR people to kind of make that happen. So we're looking forward to getting them back out there and making that happen. When the school year comes back in the fall, hopefully, we can get back and and start, you know, that education, again, catching them when they're young and making sure they're developing good habits. And then building on that is, you know, as they're growing into adults and teaching their parents to do the right thing because we know we're not always doing that. So that's pretty much a summary of where we are. Appreciate the opportunity to to, again, be here with you and present the good things that we do. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Seale has a question.
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner Justice. What is the $30 million per year transfers to other programs? I'm trying to figure that out.
Hi, this is Linda. I can answer that for you. We transfer $30 million each year between the solid waste revenue and operating fund to the solid waste R and R fund. And that that puts it aside so that we have those funds in CIP in order to fund whatever CIP projects are needed.
Okay, so it's for CIP projects?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a CIP budget document yet? I don't see that in the what we were sent.
I believe it is in attachment two, solid waste budget reports, and it's on page six. Thanks, Jen. It starts on page six. I think it's a couple of pages.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question is on attachment five, the rate study?
Yes.
What will our tipping fees be? Because that's going to be our primary source of income going forward, it appears. So what are we anticipating those increases to be? Percentage-wise and or say like in 2036, I see millions of dollars, but I don't see on slide five, I see contribution of revenues, but it's expressed in millions of dollars rather than per ton.
Right. So if I understand your your question correctly, you're wanting to know what the tipping fee rate itself would be in those out-years?
Yes, per ton.
Okay. I will tell you that the rate consultant, when they performed this rate study, they did ask for guidance from the technical management committee, that's the TMC, as to what type of increases they would feel most comfortable with or it would be the most palatable. So the PowerPoint deck that we have as an attachment assumes that it's a steady rate increase year over year. So it's a 6% rate increase every year, although the board, of course, has not adopted that. They've only adopted the 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 three-year rate increase that we're embarking on the third year of that right now. And I will say that the TMC is tasked with reviewing the financials every year and with making a rate recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners every year. And as such, we have a consultant either update or rebuild the rate model. And so we will most definitely do that again and present that to the TMC, and then the TMC will present the findings and their recommendation to the board, probably in the January timeframe, I'm thinking, because that's generally when it is, right, Paul?
Okay. Further questions?
Oh, and just finally, and I don't have to have it now, but you can change that chart to show what 6% a year equates to per ton and provide that to us at some point. That would be very beneficial and informational. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to.
If nobody else has questions, Paul, I had a question about the the incinerating the electronics. So are we just, we incinerating the whole thing, or are we actually manually separating, or how is that? I'm worried about Commissioner Welch, and he he brings in his old Commodore 64, and his personal information from high school is still on the hard drive. I don't want him to get in trouble.
Yeah, so current practice right now, when when folks bring us our their electronics, we actually are having them sign a waiver because we're actually taking those electronics and passing them off to our third, you know, third-party contractor who's doing that recycling. passing them off to our third, you know, third-party contractor who's doing that recycling. So, you know, the folks that are bringing us, they're giving us that information, so hopefully, they've removed their personal information. But if not, we've effectively lost control of that, which we've never really enjoyed the liability associated with that, even though it's a pass-through from us to our contractor. By taking electronics, we would just be collecting them, putting them in a collection bin, and it just gets mixed with the rest of the garbage. It would be taken to the tipping floor and then dumped. Now, we haven't said we were going to do this yet fully. We have to get out what the stakeholders, we have to get out what the public, we need to get with our municipal haulers, our private haulers, and see how that collection's going to take place. You know, we need, it'd be best if these were just placed in, you know, their normal trash containers that they have. But some of these larger TVs and whatnot are not going to fit. And I don't think the, I shouldn't say, I don't believe that the municipal haulers or the private contractors are going to take another collection just for electronics. They're going to want us to remain open and put that burden on the citizens like they do now to bring us those larger electronics. But the smaller electronics, they could put in the collection bins. And even if the electronics came to our site, all of those would just be taken like they would normal solid waste and combined, and then just incinerated.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, if we're done with questions for them, just one final note. I know it's been a long day. We've got seven departments lined up for tomorrow, so we'll have another long day. But I did want to announce, we had said before about having a hospitality-oriented vaccination point tomorrow. We're going to be setting up at San Pearl, Sheridan Sand Key, Wyndham Grand, and Shepherd's Beach Resort throughout the day at different times, and this is for hospitality employees. And it's the Johnson &amp; Johnson, so one and done. And so that's out. Steve and team, along with the Department of Health and everybody else, put that together. And so just proud to be able to announce this. They're going to have future follow-on events in the upcoming weeks also.
And our beach chamber knows all about that?
Yes, I'm assuming they do. Last night, I know somebody didn't, but I know they were coordinating that. So this is kind of real-time information.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank the staff for a very good day, a lot of information. We appreciate your good work. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned. See you tomorrow.